Good evening and welcome to the special Fairfax Town Council meeting Wednesday, February 15th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. We are in person and on Zoom here. Can I get, uh, I guess we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Excellent, thank you. Uh, can I get a roll call for attendance, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman?
Present.
Councilmember Hellman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kohler?
Here.
Councilmember Blash?
Here.
And Mayor Cutrone?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion Kohler, second Hellman. Uh, could I get a roll call vote, please, Michelle?
Yes, Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blash?
Yes.
And Mayor Cutrone?
Yes. All yeses. Thank you. Councilmember Blash, would you be willing to read the land acknowledgement this evening?
Yes. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present Damarin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'll now read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meeting. Uh, the council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place on silent mode. Uh, the town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matters not started by 11:30 PM, uh, will possibly be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. Um, and we'll get right into it with our regular agenda. Item one is to discuss or consider Ross Valley Fire Department Governance and Leadership Study and provide direction to town representatives on the Ross Valley Fire Board. Uh, Manager Abrams?
Mayor, I'll, I'll start out. Um, so this is an important, um, presentation. Um, as you know, the Ross Valley Fire Department is, um, the largest, uh, single expense item on the town's budget. So that makes it very important to us. Um, and the purpose of tonight's presentation is, um, to get the full council's feedback to the Ross Valley Fire Department's, um, board representatives who are, um, on our council on which leadership options to pursue. And, um, the board will choose which option to pursue, uh, in their March meeting. And then I'll, uh, continue to provide information to you as a council, um, as that process moves along. And, um, I also wanted to make note that Fairfax, the town of Fairfax, has committed to, um, some upgrades to the Fairfax Station. Um, that's not, uh, on this item today, but I will be coming back to you later with an update on that. So just, uh, with that, want to turn it over to our chiefs and staff.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Jason Weber, Ross Valley Fire Chief, pleasure to be with you this evening. Um, just as to lay the land, I guess, here for what's gonna occur, uh, our consulting team, Jim Irving, no stranger to Fairfax, and, uh, Mr. Politzer, no stranger to Fairfax, uh, have been acquired, um, to look and review, uh, the options that they're presenting in front of you tonight. So I'll kick things off, we'll turn it over to them, and I think the intention would be come back to your council with questions. If we want to stop or pause during the presentation, uh, you know, I think Jim is amendable to that. Um, and, and so we can, as we go, but just as background, I think it's important for our constituency, your, your council, um, you know, the, the question is, why are we here? Um, Marin County Fire Department's been in a five-year term agreement for administrative services, uh, for the Ross Valley Fire Department. It started in 2018. Um, and in the last year or so, a lot has fallen on Marin County Fire. Um, I'd say fallen on, uh, it was asked for, um, but it's a lot. And, uh, in the next 12 months, we'll be assuming fire dispatch services across the entire county. Um, historically, that was split between two dispatch centers. Uh, I think the good news is for the public, better functionality, um, you know, higher level of service when they're combined, more efficiency, but, but it's a lot of work coming, and it's, it's gonna be, uh, run by Marin County Fire. Um, the other piece is our fire crew program, um, which originally had 12 people, uh, in one crew. They did vegetation management work, has grown to a program of four, uh, fire crews, a fuels crew, uh, it's about 70 personnel total now, um, and is partially funded by the state of California as of this fiscal year and next. So that's a big jump. It's almost doubled the size of the organization in many ways. Um, and then we assumed the Office of Emergency Management, uh, as under Marin County Fire earlier this year. So we made the choice not to pursue, uh, or recommended not, um, moving forward with another term in the agreement. So that left us at a crossroads for Ross Valley Fires. What's the next leadership model and governance model? Um, and I think when we look at this, we're really asking, let's look forward. Let's see what, what's, what's the long-term solution for fire services. And Jim and Adam will cover, um, a lot of the, the difference between leadership and governance, the options that are in front of the Fire Board, being presented to your council tonight, direction, um, and other pieces there. I think some of, uh, the history is important. In 2018, the Fire Board looked at really two options to move forward, uh, after, uh, the other, the previous fire chief had left, and that was hire another standalone fire chief, which has been the history since really the combination of Fairfax and San Somo in 1982, um, or look at a shared services model, um, with a neighboring agency. And, and Kenfield and County Fire had expressed an interest, worked through the process. Ultimately, it was County Fire left, um, and the Ross Valley Fire Board had gone through a recruitment process for a fire chief and had looked at the candidates, um, and made the decision to move forward with County Fire in a five-year agreement. So that's where, where we ended up from 2018. I don't think in 2018, anybody realized that we'd be dealing with, you know, the implementation of the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, which I think has been enormously successful, but also quite a bit of work. Um, the COVID pandemic, the closure of one of the fire stations in the Ross Fire Station and, and Station 18, um, and now working through the leadership and governance. So that's a lot above just the kind of standard fire chief and administrative duties. Um, you know, I think moving forward, hopefully, a lot of those bigger items have been taken off. And even like, uh, the, the town manager mentioned, facilities and stuff is, is still something to work through. Um, in, I guess, last spring, we, uh, approached the Fire Board with hiring a consulting firm, um, to look at this leadership and governance options. Uh, three firms responded to the RFP, uh, the Local Motion Solutions. Jim and Adam were selected, uh, to move forward in the process. I think their intimate knowledge of this organization coupled with work in, in previous organizations, the combination of South Salito and Southern Marin Fire, Central Marin, before it was Larkspur and Corte Madera, a lot of experience, similar-sized agencies. It's been a good fit, um, and they're in front of you today. Really, what we're asking is for the, the Fire Board to narrow the discussion, um, so we can move forward and get additional detail. One of the things I think we've heard clear from the Fire Board as well as other councils, we need more detail to make this decision. This is a big decision. We agree it's a big decision. It's an important decision. Um, but we're still flying at about 25,000 feet, and we're gonna need the board's direction to go negotiate a lot of that detail that I think everybody's really interested in. But I think our time is best spent doing that with a single option, um, ultimately, that we can run to ground with details and then come back for policy direction from the Fire Board. So Jim and Adam will speak to the fact that some of these options have been narrowed for us by other agencies not interested in, in expanding and, and adding a shared service. They're already kind of maxed out at their capacity. So some of the things are falling off just by virtue of they're no longer an option because, you know, that, that is held by an outside agency. Um, and, you know, I think the, the leadership piece is something that's in front of us right now. The governance piece, and you'll hear them speak to this, is further down the road, and, and what those two mean. So what I think we'll be asking for the Fire Board, um, and based on the previous council meeting we've had at the next Fire Board meeting, is direction to go negotiate the details of one of these two options and come back to the Fire Board for policy direction. Um, and, you know, I, being this is a very public and transparent process, I'm sure all of you have read the IJ or have seen articles on this, you know, we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves that we still have another partner agency to talk to and get details on and negotiate with, and labor group that'll be affected that requires meet and confer, and, and these guys will talk a little bit about that. Um, but I think it's important to understand that what we're asking for really is those options to be narrowed so we can go get the detail that I think everybody, rightfully so, is interested in, in getting. Um, we, at that point, would return, I'm a very optimistic person, April or May, um, with that level of detail to the Fire Board, for then a policy decision that would include, if, you know, whichever one of these options we narrow. I would suggest that we don't run these in parallel like we did in 2018. I think that can complicate the discussions on both sides, um, and/or scare away potential candidates that you would have on a standalone fire chief that aren't sure which way the organization's going. Um, so really, I think as we get in this today, um, and we'll, we'll, we'll follow through at the end, is we're asking your council to provide input to the Fire Board members that will take that back in, in the March meeting, um, to inform the discussion. We've met with Ross and San Somo, and we're gonna, San Somo is first, and we're gonna go back to San Somo on the 28th. I would say, generally speaking, that the shared services option with Central Marin seems to be favorable, um, by most other council members, with the caveat that they like more detail. Um, so I think that's kind of the landscape that we're presenting in front of your council today. You're lucky, you're the third one, so you get a little bit more vision on that than the others had. But that generally seems to be the piece. Um, and I think that the labor group, uh, informally has, has discussed this and, and feels that approach is more favorable. Also, I don't want to speak for them, um, but I understand that, that is how that meeting went. So with no further ado, uh, I can certainly answer any questions now, but, uh, Jim and Adam will present the information, um, and then we'll be here to, to answer any questions.
Well, I'd first just like to say hello, and it's fantastic to be back. This is the first time that I've been in a live meeting here in the town of Fairfax, even though I served as your interim for eight months. So it's great to see everyone, uh, back here, uh, in person, and, uh, very nice to see some friendly faces both up at the diocesan here in the audience. Um, as, uh, Chief Weber just shared, uh, Local Motion Solutions has been brought on to help the Fire Board walk through at a high level the six options that, uh, you would have all read in the report that went to the Fire Board, uh, last month. Again, this is at a high level. Step one is where we are, which is high level, kind of narrowing down those six options. Uh, we met with, um, all of the council members from the town of Ross, town of San Somo, town of Fairfax, and the Sleepy Hollow Fire District Board members. Uh, we met with, uh, many stakeholders, uh, all the way up to, to, we stopped counting after 38, uh, people. Um, so we got a lot of information, but it was also a two-way discussion. We were able to answer questions of the members of, of the boards, um, and also, uh, clarify some of the information about, uh, the different options. Um, so now the board has asked us to come in front of the councils and give them an update. And as Chief Weber just explained, uh, give you all the opportunity to get up to speed on where we are from when we last met, and then, uh, ask us, uh, any additional clarifying questions. Uh, but also, more importantly, is give your board members, uh, an opportunity to share their feedback, um, and for you to give them feedback on, on which direction you would, uh, recommend going again at this phase. Uh, it's likely that we will be back in front of you, or at least your city manager and fire chief will be back in front of you, um, when the board gets to the decision point, but that's not where we are right now. We're just asking to move forward with one of these options so we can actually get into, into the, into the meat of the detail. So with that, I just wanted to, again, say hello, and nice to see you all again. And I'm gonna turn it over, uh, to Chief Irving here. Uh, Chief, Chief Irving and I worked together when he was the chief of Southern Marin Fire, and I was the city manager in South Salito. Um, so, and, and when I was here in Fairfax, obviously, having a friend down the street, uh, was, was, uh, a bonus, um, for, for this opportunity. So, Chief?
Thank you. Good evening. Do you want to go ahead and go to the next slide there? Perfect. Um, as, as Adam mentioned, we're Local Motion Solutions. I'm Jim Irving. Uh, I've had the fortunate experience of living in Fairfax for 35, 37 years, something like that. So, you know, I look at things and try to be very objective about everything, but I also am very concerned about Fairfax and, and the fire protection we receive in this community. Um, I want to point out that, that the presentation we're doing tonight is a brief version of a full presentation that we did for the Fire Board. And if you want to see that, that more full presentation, you can go onto the Fire Board's website and look at that there. There's also the written report that's on there. Um, there's a couple things that are outdated since we did that, some numbers and stuff that we've updated since the original report was done, but it's still got a lot of information on there. And we will likely publish the, the next version of the, of the, uh, report probably by the, uh, excuse me, the March meeting. As, as Adam mentioned, we interviewed all the town council members from each of the agencies involved in the Ross Valley Fire Authority, as well as the, the board of the Sleepy Hollow Fire Protection District. We met with the management staff of Marin County Fire, Ross Valley Fire, Kenfield Fire, San Rafael Fire, Central Marin Fire. Um, we met with LAFCO representatives, we met with the union for Ross Valley firefighters, we met with the Marin County Fire Union. So we reached out to everyone we could to get input and see what people were, were interested in, just to make sure we're trying to cover all bases. Thank you. Um, the thing that we came to fairly early on in this was that there's really two different decisions to be made here. Um, one of the decisions is governance, and that is, you know, how is it funded? And how is it managed politically? And there's a, a few different ways to do that. You can have a independent district, a dependent district, and I won't go into what each of these are at this meeting, again, because this is a more brief. A joint powers authority with the current agencies, so basically leaving it the same, or a joint powers authority with additional agencies. The other issue, and this is really the more pending issue, is leadership and management. And that is, how do we management, and how do we lead it, and how's it organized? And that's more the day-to-day operations of the, of the fire department. And within that, you can do a contract for service, similar to what you have with Marin County Fire Department right now. Um, unfortunately, we found no agencies that were interested in doing that. You know, we, we talked about that with, with Kenfield Fire Protection District, with the city of San Rafael, and obviously, we know that Marin County Fire is pulling out of the contract. So there was, nobody was interested in, in exploring a contract for service any farther. We talked about joint powers agreement or shared services agreement, uh, joint powers authority with additional agencies, or standalone fire agency. So going back to having your own fire chief. The other thing that was very apparent is the timeline versus time constraint. And we noted that some of these options may take a while to implement, and we don't have a while. You know, we have until July 1 to come up with some plan. And so we, we felt it was important that we focus on the issues that, you know, were in front of us, that we could potentially do by July 1, or even sometime closer to July 1, with some type of a bridge to get to a desired model. When we looked at independent or dependent fire districts, um, we felt that the LAFCO process would probably length, be lengthy, and there was really no way to get to any type of a district within the timeframe we were looking at, or even close to the timeframe we were looking at. I, I want to point out that this may be a very viable option in the future, um, but it's not necessarily a viable option for the, the situation we have right now. Um, some examples of, of fire districts here in Marin County, you have Nevada Fire Protection District, which serves both the city of Nevada, as well as Ignacio, uh, Bell Marin Keys, Greenpoint, Blackpoint, all that area. So it's inclusive of an area that's larger than the, the city of Nevada. And that's, excuse me, one of the things about fire districts is that they can be more broad and cover larger areas than typically a city or a town. Uh, Tiburon covers the three-quarters of the, or excuse me, three-quarters of the incorporated town of Tiburon, as well as the backside of Tiburon Paradise K area. And then, uh, it also covers under contract the city of Belvedere. So again, it's covering a larger area. And then you have Southern Marin Fire, which covers the city of South Salito, the GGNRA, the unincorporated areas of Mill Valley, a quarter of the town of Tiburon, and as of July 1, will be annexing the city of, excuse me, the city of Mill Valley into the district. And they have just completed the LAFCO process. Looking at joint powers agreements, joint powers agreements are great for sharing limited services or functions between organizations. Um, this can be a, you know, sharing battalion chiefs, or sharing, you know, fire inspectors, or, or things along that line, or trading, you know, battalion chiefs between agency. Um, when we look at some examples, we see San Rafael Marinwood. San Rafael provides battalion chiefs to Marinwood. That's the, the initial incident command officer on, on any major incident. In turn, Marinwood provides medical response into areas and first initial response into areas that are closer to Marinwood than they are to the city of San Rafael Fire Stations. Um, Southern Marin and Mill Valley, again, this was the lead-up to their, their annexing the city of Mill Valley into Southern Marin. They have actually had a JPA in place for probably eight years now, and it's, it's increased over time. It started off with sharing battalion chiefs, then sharing the entire management staff, and ultimately leading to the annexation of the city into the district. And then you have Central Marin and Kenfield, where Central Marin provides two battalion chief shift coverages, where Kenfield provides one. And again, the battalion chief is the initial response incident commander for any significant incident. Some of the, the pros of a joint powers agreement is that they're easy to form, and they're flexible. Uh, they're good at sharing limited resources, um, and a bridge to get to a permanent agreement, sort of like Mill Valley and Southern Marin have done. And then any government agency can partake in it in a JPA. So you can have cities, towns, counties, fire districts, whatever happens to be. So any of those agencies can partake in a JPA. Um, they can negotiate their levels of commitment. It allows agencies to essentially trade services. It's like I was talking about, um, for example, you know, Central Marin and Kenfield simply trading battalion chiefs on a day-to-day basis. And it's up to the agencies to determine what's fair and equitable between them. So they can balance out the services however they feel is necessary. And sometimes it may, uh, involve a payment to cover an imbalance in resources. Uh, for an example, in addition to the chief officer response that San Rafael provides to Marinwood, they also provide a fire chief, but that is done on a fee for, uh, service from Marinwood to the city of San Rafael. And then they can be canceled without any significant unwinding. So it's, it's not like you have permanent employees of one agency where you have to figure out where all those employees are going to go. You can simply say, okay, you know, six months from now, we're undoing this. Everyone goes back to wherever they had, had started with. You go to the next slide? Thanks. Some of the cons is that there's not a single body overseeing the provision of service. So the, the direction may rely on committees with limited authority or ad hoc agreements between the agencies. And over time, the understanding between those agencies can drift or change. So you don't have, for example, a, you know, board of directors or a city council saying, here's where we want this agency to go. Additionally, each agency still has to maintain its own budget, its own employees, and its policies and procedures. Again, this can get difficult trying to run a single agency with multiple budgets. And because the agencies are separate, it can be difficult to focus on long-range planning and long-range capital outlay. You know, who pays for a fire station, or who pays for, you know, a new fire engine, things like that can become complicated. And then again, because the agent, or the people work for separate agencies, there might be misunderstandings about chain of authority, priorities, allegiances, and the mission of the organization. And then lastly, it can lead to difficulties with employee discipline, collective bargaining, working conditions, and benefits. A joint powers authority or agency, um, joint powers authority, as I think all of you know, it's creates a separate new agency, which all the employees would be transferred to. Uh, this is exactly what Ross Valley Fire is and what you're currently in. Um, the, the benefit of that is that all those things I talked about a minute ago is, you know, the, the differences in missions and all that sort of falls away because you have a single agency, you know, and for example, in Ross Valley, it's managed by the Ross Valley Authority. Although there's input from each of the, uh, varying agencies, each of the towns and the fire district, it's still the Ross Valley Fire Authority Board that makes the decisions. Um, examples of, um, Ross, or excuse me, examples of authorities within Marin, you have obviously the Ross Valley Fire Authority, you have the Central Marin Fire Authority, and you have the Central Marin Police. There's numbers of, of others, you know, your, your Marin County Hazmat, all kinds of, you know, the, all kinds of, uh, different, different agencies. They're used pretty extensively in Marin. Then if we look at standalone fire agency, as I think all of you know, Ross Valley historically has had a single fire chief in the past who oversaw administration operations and fire prevention. Some of the pros are that you maintain local control. Um, the Ross Valley Fire Board would have a chief, and that chief's sole focus would be on Ross Valley Fire Department. You wouldn't have to worry about what's going on in other parts of the county. Um, it's simple and a maintained status quo. You have a single chief, a single board. The cons is it will likely increase cost. Um, you have a small pool of candidates internally, and hiring from the outside can bring unknown qualities, as I think you know from past experience here. And it also duplicates the services of adjacent, adjacent agencies. So let's talk a little bit about, um, standalone fire agency and, and the thought of going back to that. Um, the fire service has become far more complex with greater demands placed on fire service managers. We, we generally break up the fire service into three different categories. That's operations, fire prevention, and administration. If you look under operations, you have fire response, EMS paramedic service, hazmat response, technical rescue, and, and a whole host of other things. Within fire prevention, you have fire prevention, you have wildland hazard mitigation, disaster preparedness, code enforcement, and a lot of those are actually becoming a lot more now that we have like the, the Marin Wildlife, Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. Um, so we're putting a far greater focus on hazard mitigation than we have in the past. And, and that's a great thing, but as Jason mentioned earlier, it's also created a greater workload for our fire departments. And then lastly, you have budgeting, personnel management, visiting, uh, visioning, planning, career development, and mentorship. And then lastly, you have budgeting, personnel management, visiting, visioning, planning, career development and mentorship. Most, most modern fire agencies of Ross Valley's size have separate managers assigned to these three basic functions, administration, operation and fire prevention. So in going forward, it is likely that Ross Valley would likely have to not only hire a fire chief, but potentially a deputy chief and a fire marshal. So if we look at what that would look like, we would have a fire chief, we'd have a deputy chief of operations overseeing the operations of the organization. We'd have a fire marshal overseeing the prevention category and that's, you know, life safety inspectors, code enforcement, et cetera. And then you'd have it administration divisions. You don't necessarily have to have a, a separate chief overseeing those. Typically those can be overseen by the fire chief. So what does that likely to cost? Go ahead. What is that likely to cost? So what we did is, is we looked at the fully benefited positions, including salaries, retirement, medical, health, insurance, life insurance, workers comp and all other post-employment benefits. What we currently are paying with Marin County Fire Department is three hundred thirty-two thousand. Projected cost for a fire chief, three forty-nine, deputy chief, three eighteen, fire marshal, two seventy-six for a total of nine forty-four. So we're looking at about a six hundred thousand dollar increase. Can that be, you know, tuned down a little bit? Maybe. You know, this, this is just a, a sort of high level number at this point. You know, people have asked about, do we have to have a safety position for the fire marshal? There are some good reasons to do that and, and you know, we might look into that more if we're given direction by the fire board to do that. But at this point, we're just giving sort of a high level of what this would look like. So we're looking at, you know, roughly six hundred thousand. Can we tune down a little bit? Yeah, probably. But again, there are, are costs and benefits to, to everything that we do. I just wanted to step back one second. Thank you. Is that these numbers were provided to us by Jeff Zubba, who is the finance manager for the town of San Onofre, based on looking at the current costs that they're paying and all the roll-up costs associated with each employee. Thanks. A joint powers agreement. This was the only other option that, that seemed to be appeared to us right now. And that is that Central Marin Fire expressed an interest in a joint powers agreement, potentially as a bridge to a joint powers authority. As I mentioned, no other agency expressed any interest in joint powers agreements, contract for service or anything. A joint powers agreement with Central Marin presents the only opportunity for either cost neutral or potentially savings or some type of similar cost to what we're paying now. You know, we don't want to say that you're going to save money because we can't guarantee that at this point. Central Marin Fire and Ross Valley Fire are very similar agencies. Both are serving, our JPAs serving, you know, small municipalities. Each agency has four stations and similar management structure. So we worked with the management staff of Ross Valley Fire and Central Marin Fire to create a possible organizational structure. And I want to be very clear, this is possible. This is just a sort of, this is what it could potentially look like. You know, that, I know that that the papers have sort of gotten way ahead of us here as, as Chief Weber mentioned earlier, that right now we're simply talking about looking at this. We're not talking about making this happen. So a, a vote even by the fire board is not saying that this is going to happen. It's saying we're going to explore it. So it could potentially look something like this. A fire chief, deputy chief of operations overseeing the three shift battalion chiefs, a battalion chief in charge of training, potentially a battalion chief in charge of EMS. And that may play out in, in different things that the combined agency might, you know, have a, a greater EMS responsibility. I don't want to go far into that either. Fire marshal overseeing prevention, life safety inspections, code enforcement, defensible space, a wildland fire mitigation and then emergency preparedness and then administration.
So Jim, I don't want to interrupt, but one thing I'm just kind of confused. This doesn't look any different than what you were describing as a standalone. Are you saying that if the joint powers agreement worked between these two, you would have the Central Marin Fire Chief? Would you have a separate deputy chief for Ross Valley, a separate fire marshal, a separate admin? Or would you be using the Central Marin folks for that? I mean, it just looks like the same sort of organization to me.
The next slide will help.
Okay, I'll hold my fire.
The, the other slide. If, if, if you can go back to the other slide. If you look at this one back here, you'll see we have, we have a deputy chief and three battalion chiefs. What if we looked at the one with Central Marin Fire, we have a deputy chief. We have three battalion chiefs plus we have a battalion chief training officer and a potentially a battalion chief EMS officer. So there's two additional battalion chiefs in the, in the one with Central Marin Fire.
Okay. And would it be the Central Marin Fire would have their deputy chief, their fire marshal, their admin?
So let's go to the next slide now. And if you look at this, this shows what each agency currently has and, and you know, the fire chief, deputy chief, and, and right now the, the Ross Valley Deputy Chief is one of the battalion chiefs who is working out of grade in a temporary position. The bottom line is currently between the two agencies, Central Marin Fire has four chief officers, Ross Valley Fire has three chief officers. We're looking at combined total of seven. And our combined agency that we outlined there would be roughly seven as well. So what we're looking at is that we could potentially build a new agency with the existing chief officers. You take those chief officers and reassign them to different positions. If that makes sense. So it wouldn't require hiring any new people.
Thanks. I, I saw that in the report, but okay, great. Thank you.
And then just to restate the two different decisions that we're talking about that will be before the fire board is, you know, the issue of governance versus the issue of leadership and the, the governance issue again, we feel that needs to be dealt with more long-term. The issue of leadership needs to be dealt with more short-term. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Jason. If you go to the next slide here.
All righty, as we mentioned when we started, this is an opportunity to clarify any questions either you or the council has. One of the reasons we're back in front of you, I think, was the importance of bringing this in front of the constituency across the entire Ross Valley and giving our public an opportunity. So thank you as a council for allowing that. I think the feedback's important. You know, this is an important community decision. Provide any additional direction to us that you'd like in the final report. So if you saw something was missing or needed clarification, we'd love that input. Also, this report's still in its draft format. But we want to make sure the final report captures everything everyone's interested in. And I think as you think about this, we really need to think about a long-term sustainable option. And I think that's an important piece for the organization. There's been a lot of change. I mentioned some of that in the beginning, just what's occurred in the last five years that I've been here. And I think the, the organization is craving stability and really a long-term solution so they can look forward and, and move forward. And you know, I think this presents a unique opportunity at the, you know, in this period of time to set that path forward. And a conversation with another council member from another town. And I said, you know, I wouldn't suggest you do anything that you don't see as a long-term option because I think that doesn't help. It'll, it'll, you know, mean that we'll be having these discussions in three or four years. So you know, as Jim mentioned, you know, the governance piece is down the road and no matter which of the two options we're, we're asking you kind of narrow down upon, they could lead to a joint powers authority, a district, independent or dependent. And so that's something that will be down the road in front of the fire board ultimately. But I think again, any of those options can lead towards, towards that, that governance model. And then ultimately, I think the purpose tonight too is for your two fire board members to hear the council's feedback and bring that information back to the discussions we have at the March eighth, I think it's March eighth, fire board meeting for direction. I don't know if Heather had anything else.
Just a reminder that you'll be selecting your fire board representatives after the site.
Great. Thank you. We'll take it back. Thank you so much for the presentations. Questions from my colleagues?
I guess, uh, thank you. That was really helpful. It's good to see again. It's a lot of information. I guess I just wanted to clarify for the public, you, you had the data or the high-level numbers provided for the standalone, right? And the reason why you don't have that, obviously for the joint powers agreement is because we haven't sat down with Central Marin yet. But safe to assume that because it's a sharing resources, right? It's a pool of leadership. That's the, that's the intent that there may be, may maybe a cost savings there of what we're paying today.
Yeah, I want to be clear that, that that is possible.
Right. But it's not, this is not a cost-saving exercise. I completely recognize that. I just wanted to give the public a sense that we're not going to be anywhere in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand incremental.
Correct. And the, the one thing I also wanted to point out that I, I forgot to point out here is that with, with that shared services model, you have those positions you can move around.
Yeah.
But you also still have the three hundred and thirty-two thousand that you're no longer paying to Marin County Fire.
Right.
So one of the things is that you might have to promote some positions. For example, you might have to make a battalion chief, a deputy chief or, or something like that. So you have a little bit of money to play with there.
Right. And I just wanted something that the chief said earlier about how basically fire services have changed so much in the last five year, particularly around prevention, the vegetation management. And we have six staff members. Is that right in our?
That's correct.
Yeah. And I think the, the staff members are, many of them shared. So we have our defensible space program that the town of Fairfax shares with the other towns through the whole Ross Valley, including Coeur d'Alene, Larkspur and the county in West Marin. And that consortium, we host three of those positions at Ross Valley Fire. They're funded jointly by all those other member agencies. Their others are carrying a burden and there's a fund transfer that goes on for that. And then we have two working in fire prevention, doing what I'll consider a kind of your municipal fire prevention plan checks and those kind of items. And then one in emergency preparedness, which is relatively new position that's focused on really the public's emergency preparedness. And I think to, to jump off of what Jim was mentioning, you know, as part of this and the cost-saving piece, we also have to meet and defer with our affected labor groups if there's any impacts. And we don't have the detail of that yet because obviously that authority comes from the fire board to meet and confer. So that'll be a piece that has to be worked into the discussions, really with both agencies if we end up in the shared discussion.
Okay. And then I just, uh, final question I think is around, so it seems like the best practice model as far as governance is the district model. And so as a long-term objective, that might be something we, we do want to go for. And I understand that's a very complex undertaking, like multi-year. But I, I guess, could you explain the distinction between the, the district and what a joint power authority, what, what those two look and feel like?
So a, a district would be a single taxing agency overlaid over the entire area versus currently with a joint powers authority, the taxes come to the city and the city turns money over to the authority. In doing a district, you have a single board that oversees everything. So they're not really relying on each city or town to develop a budget that includes the fire service.
So the districts of the fire organization has autonomy over their budget rather than the pass-through that exists today.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to get that out. Thank you.
Nice, Michael.
Yeah, thank you. And I realize the governance piece is off for a bit. I mean, my view is looking more like shared services agreement as a bridge to something like a JPA. It's my information that the districts you provided in your example are all pre-prop thirteen. And that's why they have significant amounts of money. I've looked at, I'm on LAFCO and I've looked at Nevada's budget. Truly extraordinary. And I think one of the pieces that would be good when you get to the governance model is to talk about the difference between pre-prop thirteen districts and how that financing works. Because as we know, with the annexation of Mill Valley into Southern Marin Fire, and that is just JP, well, that's going into a district, there's tremendous amounts of money from property taxes that has to be forked over from the city. And so I think as we, if we look to that governance model in the future, other than just staying with a JPA ultimately, I think that would have to be looked at pretty hard as far as how much money would be redirected from each of the cities from their property tax revenues because most of us are actually quite dependent on property tax to run our cities. So I just put that in in your hat for later. But thanks for the presentation and the good news is we did annex Mill Valley into Southern Marin Fire at the December meeting. And it looks like there's still some details to be worked out to hit the July one date. And I just want to throw this out that fire consolidations in LAFCO is the biggest deal ever. And one of the reasons that was so successful is because LAFCO was involved early on. And so it was the fastest one anybody had seen. So I think, thank you for your work, good explanation.
Councilmember Ackerman, Councilmember Blash, any questions?
Yeah, just for comparison's sake, can you explain, I know that we couldn't do either of them now, but the amount of time it takes to set up a district versus a joint powers authority?
You're probably looking at, I, I would guess a couple of years to get to a district. You know, you mentioned that the, the Mill Valley Southern Marin consolidation. And although the actual formation and annexation has been fairly quick, they've been sharing services for many, many years. I think, as you know, I used to be the chief of Southern Marin Fire. And we started sharing services when I was chief there in two thousand fourteen. So it, it's not something that typically happened, happens quickly. It's something that the agencies have to build some type of a bridge. And typically that is some type of a JPA. You know, to sort of get to know each other and for all of the council people and decision makers to say, yeah, we're comfortable with this now. You know, the, from Sausalito coming into Southern Marin. I believe that was in earnest for years of trying to do that. And we had been, you know, in a JPA or actually a contract for service and previous to that, a JPA for, I believe it was four or five years already. So they typically take a, a long time of agencies working together in order to get to a point where they're comfortable with that.
I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just want to say congratulations and welcome to the council. Nice to see you there. The, the, the complexity is based on looking at the two options of a district. You can join the Sleepy Hollow district, which is already an existing district amongst your partners now. So that, that's a familiar agency that, that you can make a small district. If you move from a joint powers agreement with Central Marin and Uh, if you move from a joint powers agreement with Central Marin and look at a central valley district, then you're looking at the four entities in Ross Valley. Town of Ross, town of San and Salmo, uh, town of Fairfax and the, can feel, or the um, Sleepy Hollow District. And then the two elected bodies of Larkspur and Coeur d'Alene. So you need to have six bodies agree. And as Councilmember or Vice Mayor Coler said, you're looking at a significant amount of property tax being transferred. And so that's why to, to Vice Mayor's comments, why it was such a celebration of what just recently happened is that it is very difficult to make that change. But as the chief said, because of the healthy relationship between Mill Valley and Southern Marin and years of working together, that had the communities all comfortable uh, in terms of the service. So if you look at a small district under the existing footprint, it's probably easier to get there, faster to get there, but may not be as beneficial to all communities because you, you, you're still in a small group. You'd still need to look at a chief, the fire marshal and the deputy chief. So you know, you would, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have the same advantages as you would with uh, aligning with Central Marin.
If, if I can add to that, um, one of the things is that, as you know, Councilman Coler, that when LAFCO looks at annexing a city into a fire district, one of the things they always look at is making sure that both the fire district and the city will be able to provide the services they need to provide after the annexation occurs. And one of the things that you're facing right now is your fire department. If you go standalone and wanted to try to create a district here with just the Ross Valley agencies as they are, you would have to build that management structure. And so that would mean you'd have to transfer a lot more money over to the district than you would if it were, you know, the combined agencies. So just something to think about.
Any questions? You're good. I just have a, before opening it up to the public, um, just to sort of pull it back from talking about that long term. So before us tonight, the discussion is trying to really figure out how we deal with the cliff that's forthcoming in, in July, right? And that's the leadership side of things. And so back to the, the slides that we had and some of the information you shared. I just want to run through it one more time really quick to make sure I understand it and the public understands it before we go to public comment. So current costs with this um, contract for service from the county, Marin Fire, it's about 332,000 and change. If we did a, a joint powers agreement with uh, Central Marin Fire, it might be roughly that same cost and possibly some cost savings there, but we don't know because we haven't sat down with those folks to work the numbers. Alternatively, to solve the, the leadership gap that we'll experience in July, we could do the standalone. And that would be an additional $611,000, which would be three new, new hires that we have to get full, you know, coverage for in terms of costs and stuff like that. And that would be a fire chief, a deputy chief and a fire marshal. And um, if we did the joint powers agreement, they would be able to provide that fire chief and a battalion chief or something like that. And we'd be able to move around, get some operational efficiency with folks that we have in, in-house. Is that, am I getting all those things right, right there?
That is correct.
Okay.
And just worth noting, with the county for that 332,000, you're getting a chief, a fire marshal, a deputy chief and a whole bunch of other support services underneath that. So uh, it, it's really important to recognize what you're getting for that 332, which is a shared service model.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that. I think now we'll open it up to the public for public comment on this item.
Hello, Council, Michael McIntosh. One, I'm a great supporter of the fire department. And I don't know how to say this really nicely, and I'm sorry how it'll come off. But I don't really think the council, looking at their past decisions has really illustrated that you have the wherewithal to make good decisions. I think the presentation tonight was probably one of the best service presentations I have seen up here in a long time. I would recommend allowing somebody that knows this land to better direct you. I believe we'll get to a better result. And at the end of the day, I believe the better decisions will probably make it more affordable for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Frank Agar met away. From 1931 to 1982, Fairfax had a standalone fire department. We had Chief Thornton, the iconic Charlie Thornton among fire chiefs in Marin who, who ran a little department here and, and did a heck of a job. And then uh, George Hetemo was the assistant chief and we had three fire captains. But we had four rigs at, at, at the firehouse. Uh, we had two type, type ones. Uh, 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 a, a grass, um, medical aid rig, we call it a squad. And then a, a type five, a four-wheel drive rig. They did a pretty good job with hardly any, any crew at all. It was unbelievable. But they had a huge volunteer fire department. When the, when the fire horn went off in Fairfax, they'd end up with, with 15 to 20 volunteer firefighters showing up in no time at all. But that was back in the day. Today, people are all working for a living and you start, they're not around here. The, the shopkeepers don't, you know, run out the door, run up to the firehouse and grab a rig and, and, and take off. It, from 83 to 2018, uh, Ross Valley had, had various, various sorts of, of, of chief officers o- over those years of a chief, an assistant chief, a battalion, three battalion chiefs. And then after the, uh, the last Ross Valley Fire Chief took a, a early disability retirement, uh, Ross Valley contracted with County Fire. Uh, and it's, it's worked quite well for five years. You know, Ross has made a decision to close their firehouse um, and, and, and be served by Ross Valley from San and Salmo. I believe that was a wrong decision for the folks, for Ross folks, because public safety, especially fire, is our number one threat. You know, we all live in this movie zone, wildland urban interface zone and, 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 and fire is, is, is on everyone's minds. At the time, Central Marin Fire was putting it together with Larkspur and, and Coeur d'Alene. I had opinion to them that they ought to just join Ross Valley instead of set up another separate JPA fire authority. Join Ross Valley because Ross Valley was a larger area of, uh, to be cer- uh, a, a service area, had more firefighters and more population. When, when I was on a fire board, I, I was pushing for Ross Valley to hire more female firefighters. And, and now you, you, there's talk about doing some changes at Fairfax Firehouse. I would have, you know, I would hope, and, and, and at the time I was hoping that, that the old captain's quarters at the firehouse in Fairfax could become uh, quarters for female firefighters. Uh, we, we, we've only had one, I believe, one female firefighter in Ross Valley in all these years.
Thank you, Mr. Agar. That was
Well, if I could just complete a little, little, have a little more time here. You know, um, i- i- in the interim, I would recommend that, that you hire an interim chief and give you time to sort out where, where you're going. I, 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 I've always could support it, staffing that, that type three at Fairfax Firehouse 24/7 uh, during high fire season and, and, and that should be done. You know, um, there's automatic response agreements, Ross Valley, Central Marin, Santa Phil, County Fire, a- a- and, and not one of us can handle a major fire on our own. We, we need, we need to joint come together. The um, ultimately, I, I think we should be looking at a countywide fire department, a city and county fire department run by, by, by Marin County Fire. One fire agency, one taxing agency and, and that, and, and run it that way. You know, we've got always got these GPAs and these combinations, but one agency, uh, should a, should a standalone fire agency be set up with a fire district with taxing authority? The question I have is would the funds that Fairfax currently pays for fire services today? That's with about two and a half million. Would that be kept by the town? Or, or, or how, how, how would the taxing authority work? I think it's real interesting. You know, it might be an advantage to Fairfax to join a, a JP, a standalone district. And you might have a windfall of tax money if, if you don't have to give up the current taxes that you pay for, the funds you pay for fire now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Howdy, folks. My name is a work in progress. Tonight you can just call me Emoji. And I keep saying, um, I've thought about this before and maybe if people can help me out a lot whenever I say, um, and oops, um, bark or meow or laugh or yell at me or something. I'm trying to cure myself of that. So if I say, um, okay, no response. Um, there we go again. Stop that. Anyway, costs keep going up. That's kind of where we're at. I hear a number like $360,000 per year for a chief and another 300 for this and that. And to me, he's never really made much of anything. That sounds like a really, really stinking high number. And I wonder, it's like, there's really nobody available to do these jobs for less than that? I mean, maybe that's not, maybe that's just the world that we really live in. I don't know. But I kind of ran off and lived at a hippie commune for a while, which was a world that doesn't seem to exist as we all have our large houses and more and more electricity and more and more gas and our Teslas and batteries and I'm going off on a tangent, but I'm a little frustrated at humanity and governance. We talk about consuming and changing things, but nobody talks about conservation, period. None of us are really going around trying to save our trips on this and buy less of this. We're all still going after bigger batteries, more solar and more. Anyway. I support the fire. I support joining things together, but I also think we need to watch out for our own town and our own selves. Because as we get bigger, nobody's watching out for us as much as we are. And as things get further away, I worry about dispatch times and other things. Now you're going to sing, um, again, I got to cure myself of that. It's an interesting world we're living in and it's not all about money. What are we doing to kind of build a world worth living in for anything's future? You know what I mean? And we all got to work together, whether it's this town, that town, Chinese balloons that are dropping postcards to go see the Xinyan at the civic center or whatever. We got work to do. And nobody's talking about conserv- conserving things. Nobody's talking about human population. All we're talking about doing is buying more stuff.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Peter. I'm a Fairfax resident. And I'm not a hundred percent sure about the, what you're talking about right here. I came in late. But I just wanted to say that I had a fire in a, in my house on the 12th of December. And the fire department couldn't have been more awesome. And just want to take the opportunity to say that. And if, and if you're talking about changing something that's presently in place, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here? If not, Michelle, is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, there is.
Excellent.
And um, I see two raised hands. The first one is Liz Frohneberger. The next one is Oscar Arenas. And this is for this item on the, um, the fire governance and leadership. So Liz, you're unmuted now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, a couple of things. Full disclosure, I'm recently retired from Central Marin Fire as their CQIRN. Further full disclosure, I worked with Jason Weber and Marin County Fire very closely for more than a decade on a variety of issues that had to do with EMS, uh, including the COVID response. So I'm, I've got a couple of distinct comments. Number one, uh, in one of the, uh, one of the slides showed EMS Battalion Chief with a question mark. I can't begin to tell you how essential an EMS Battalion Chief is in any department that has anything to do with 911 response. So that shouldn't be a question mark there. That is a person who needs to be distinct from their shift duties. And Marin County Fire, the reason Marin County Fire was able to launch the most amazing response in, in almost no time at all to our COVID situation was because they had an EMS BC who was fully committed, who totally understood the ICS, the incident command system, and could set up a variety of responses to that, that really kept our county safe. And that was thanks mostly due to a very small number of people, the EMS agency. But Marin County's EMS Battalion Chief was essential. I don't think any department that is a 911 transport agency should be without uh, that, that, that distinct responsibility. Number two, Ms. Coler, I agree with you that you need to look long and hard before you all go to a district. That, that moves money in strange and mysterious ways that, that has come up in the past to bite Nevada District uh, over the last few decades. I certainly would support a JP agreement as a first step uh, before you go to a standalone. I think a standalone is a waste of money. And um, I think that's it for now.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And the next speaker is Oscar Arenas. Sorry, I just, someone else just popped up for you. Hang on. Okay, Oscar, you're next. You're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my first name is Oscar Arenas. I am the association president for the Ross Valley Fire Department. And we actually do have a formal position that we have taken. In the short term, we agree or we would like the exploration of shared services with Central Marin. It um, it makes sense for what we currently have with our shared services with Marin County Fire Department, that we definitely need that assistance in the upper management level. We have grown exponentially. And that support I think is vital for the success of the fire department. In regards to the governance in the long term, we feel that the fire district model gives us a better outlook for the future as far as for financial sustainability.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, there are no more raised hands.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you very much. We'll take it back. Councilmember Hellman, do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, um, I'm appreciative that Oscar just spoke, the president of the Ross Valley Fire Fighters Association. Having heard this presentation now a couple of times, having spoken to LAFCO and the chief and one-on-ones with yourselves from LMS, I, I think it makes so much sense to pursue the leadership model as a short-term, looking at that with um, Central Marin, absolutely. And, and to consider that a pathway to whatever the long-term is. And I do think we should explore a district model because having that data will be informative and we just haven't done that strategic effort. I, I'm not aware of that, that it's ever been done, has it? Yeah. So to me, that just makes sense to do it. Information is power and but I understand that's a very complex, long-term um, effort. So I think um, what I've heard in terms of the cost efficiency, the pooling of resources, um, et cetera, that, that makes the most sense. I think that's the direct, that's the direction we should go in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Vice Mayor Coler?
Yeah, um, so I, I checked in with Oscar and also Marin professional firefighters on their thinking on this as well. Seems to me that the shared services agreement is the bridge that's needed. Seems to me that the shared services agreement is the bridge that's needed. And particularly with Central Marin, I, I know Chief Martin is one of the, all the fire chiefs are very well respected, but I know he's incredibly well respected. And I think it would be a good fit. And I, I want to say that I like the idea of a bridge to at least a JPA. But when, I've been sitting on LAFCO for about three years now. And when we did the municipal service review for Upper Ross Valley, I specifically pushed for LAFCO starting to work with Ross Valley on evaluating a district model. But we may not get there. But I want us to at least look at that as Councilmember Hellman says, for the long-term piece. But I think looking at, um, pre Prop 13, after Prop 13, what happens? It's not as simple as the old days. And so I'm fully supportive. I, I think the presentation and the report were really helpful in the details. And unlike other cities, I don't think, my personal opinion is, I don't need, unless I became a Fire Board member, I don't need to hear the nitty-gritty details of a shared services agreement. I, I think that's sort of in my mind, the way we should go. And we don't have a lot of time. I know people feel that it would be a nice fit with Central Marin. So I'd like to go there. But I do think, um, in the future, coming back with the governance model and really spelling out some of those gruesome details will be, or wonderful details, will be a good thing. And also, um, one of the reasons why LAFCO held off on pursuing this is because we were asked to, to make sure that Ross Valley Fire had time with its consultants to really evaluate things first. But I do want to urge you that as we start looking into the governance model, I think it's really important to get LAFCO involved early. And thank you for meeting with Jason. He's a great guy. But so wherever we go beyond here, it would be really nice to see maybe less than eight or nine years, Mill Valley Southern Marin, which I know has been, it's incredible success story, but let's get to a long-term, more sustainable solution in the future, in the nearer future. So thanks, really appreciate it. And great to see you both, all three of you. And we're going to sorely miss Jason Weber, who has taken on way too much and done an incredible job in the last five years being our fire chief. And I can tell you, Jason would call me from a camping trip with his wife and kids whenever I had a question. He's one of the most responsive people I've ever worked with and done a great job leading our crew. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I just have one quick comment and going to expand on that. So just to clarify for the public, there is nothing broken that we're trying to fix. There is a contract ending and we would love, you know, we love Chief Weber, et cetera, but it's not sustainable. I know, I don't know how you do it. It's, it's too much for one human being and you, you are extraordinary. It's been a pleasure. And it's not goodbye yet, but I just want to make that really clear to everyone. I think we're probably unanimous as a community that there is nothing broken right now, but we, we, we have to make a decision. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
If I could ask Chief Weber, we, we talked earlier about this just very briefly. And you mentioned that you are, if I understood correctly, you, you generally favor the regional fire departments or regional fire districts. I just wondered if you could elaborate on that and what you, what you mean by that.
Absolutely. And thank you for the nice comments. It's a great team. It's easy to be good and well-liked when you have a fabulous team you're working with. And I think to Councilmember Hellman's point, it's important for the public to understand. If you call 911, there will not be a change in service today, tomorrow, or the next day. We operate in this county still as one unified response. And so no matter where the incident is, whose jurisdiction, it doesn't matter. We, the old days, you used to have to call and ask permission, can I take a truck from you for this fire? It's all automatic now. It's seamless. You get the closest resources, no matter what agency they're from. So I think that's an important detail always to reinforce. And I think it leads into your question about regionalizing fire services. I think that's the future. You know, I think the scale of economy, the diversity of work we do is much different than it was 20, 25 years ago. You know, Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority was created to really break down those barriers and boundaries that were historically there for work being done on one side of the fence line and not on the other. Fire knows no jurisdictional boundary. It will travel from one to the next. And I think that when you're able to combine services, you create greater efficiency. And ultimately, it's a better level of service across the board. You know, I think when we started this shared services model, some of the biggest concerns were, well, we won't have our fire chief. And, you know, I hope at the end of this, you feel like we still had a fire chief and he'd answer his or her phone. And, and I think you'll have the same in either model you move forward with.
And thank you. And, and just to, just to clarify, because of a comment that we heard that none of you would foresee any difference in response times based upon, for example, whether Fairfax, whether the Ross Valley were to consolidate with Central Marin. Ultimately, that would not change response times because actually the responses come from the individual fire stations, which would still be located where they are.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's it. I mean, we're talking about the upper management of an organization. You know, and, and ultimately, if a fire does occur, you may still get me coming over the hill to assist from the Woodacre side, and that's just how we operate. And, and so we'll still work together. Anytime Ross Valley needed anything, I would be there. And vice versa, we could rely on whomever the chief is here the other way. But from a response perspective, nothing changes with our fire stations.
Okay. And then maybe just one other question that I haven't heard addressed at this point, which is that my understanding, and I don't sit on the Fire Board. My, my understanding has been that with the closure of the Ross Station, that that could move the other stations to having, within Ross Valley, to having three, three people per engine, which is something that has been desired for a while.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's still something that could happen through these.
Yeah, that is planned for July 1st, 2025, regardless of decision in front of the Fire Board currently. I think it's an important highlight that that still should be a goal, I think, that the Board maintains, trying to achieve those staffing, which is really the industry standard. Ross Valley's fire is really the last engine companies in this county that are still at two people. So when the Ross Fire Station closes, those personnel will shift. But it still leaves us one station where we have to achieve that staffing goal. And I think in some cases, this could help in, in that decision. You know, depending on which model you, you ultimately select or the Board Fire Board ultimately selects. But I still think that should be on the radars as a goal for the organization.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Blash, do you have any comments?
Okay. Well, I mean, I'll just conclude the round, the round of comments here by just saying I agree with my colleagues here that I think it, it's quite clear that we're fast approaching a cliff of sorts and we need to make a decision about that. And then we can start getting into the details about what the long-term solution is for service provision for the residents in our communities, but also, you know, making things work well for our folks in uniform that are doing the hard work in our communities as well. So, um, yeah, I, I think that's our goal here tonight is to give direction to our reps to the Fire Board so that they can go back to the Fire Board and report back what, how Fairfax feels and what we think should be explored. If there are any other, do we need, do we want to vote on that formally? Or Town Manager Abrams? We could do a thumbs up or something like that. Is that? Okay.
We had, we had a request to give direction to the board members.
Okay.
Yes.
So Board Member President Hellman, as President of the Ross Valley Fire Board, do you feel like you have clear direction from council or?
Yeah. Does anyone have any reservations about the direction to proceed with the joint powers agreement?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, Chief.
Not even eight o'clock. Thank you.
Good to see you, Adam.
Okay, we will be moving on to item number two here, which is to discuss, consider Town Council Board and Committee assignments for 2023, which was continued from the February 1st regular Town Council meeting. Michelle, do you want to give us a rundown on how this typically works?
Sure, I can do that. So, um, well, as the staff report says, this happens every year. You look at your, the council reviews its assignments to these countywide bodies, mostly committees, and decides if they want to change things up. And this year, we have a new council member who has no assignments yet. So there is an opportunity to, um, to review all of your assignments and see, you know, based on maybe Councilmember Blash's particular interests and areas of expertise and skill. And of course, all this, all the assignments that were held by Councilmember Goddard are right now unassigned. So the way it's happened, there's no rule. You don't have an adopted policy. But usually the mayor sort of moderates the discussion and goes through that rather than staff.
Great. Okay, happy to do it. Um, I guess we'll go from sort of left to right here and maybe just Councilmember Ackerman, how do you feel about your assignments? Any changes or anything that you'd like?
I'm not looking for any changes in the assignments that I, that I have now.
Okay.
I was actually happy to see that you were listed, Mayor, as the alternate on the mosquito district. And I, I do think that we should have, I mean, on the, I'm sorry, flood zone. And I'm, I do think we should have an alternate. So I guess we do, and I'm glad.
Could you say what, what the assignments are since you're sitting in the Senate and we don't know what?
Sure, it's in the staff report. Thank you. But Michelle?
I could share.
Do you want to put it on the screen?
Give me a minute. Yeah, I'll put it up.
Can I just make a comment, though? We also, I thought, got direction from our staff attorney that we don't want two members on commissions anymore. So.
We decided we would talk about that. I think it's a retreat.
Oh, okay. I, I understood differently, but.
I had thought also that, that, which we talked about before, and I'm in, I'm in agreement with it, but that that applies to local, a local.
That, yeah, that's our committees and stuff.
We commonly have representatives and alternates to the outside.
Yeah, no, I was talking about the local.
That should maintain. That's a very important thing to have an alternate to.
Yeah, no, I was referring to our local ones, but I'm, I'm indifferent if you want to put that off.
Well, I think there was only one or two that, that ran into that, right? It was the Climate Action Committee, as well as the Affordable Housing Committee were the two committees that we had.
That's right.
Assigned folks. And I think you two were on the Climate Action. I don't know if one of you plan to step away from that or how that's worked out, but currently only Councilmember, Vice Mayor Kohler is on the Housing Committee, right? Affordable Housing.
Yeah, and I, I think, I, I thought we were going to wave it. I think the Affordable Housing Committee is a different kind of committee. And I, I think the resolution specifically talks about two council members because it's not, it, it's, it's different and it's not all your voting members. Go ahead.
We have various types of bodies here, Brown Act bodies, as we call them. Sometimes you have an ad hoc subcommittee that is specifically two people. Sometimes you form a committee such as the Affordable Housing Committee, and you have defined the number of members in each role or category of members. So you might have two spots for a council member. That's a little different from your standalone committees of members of the public that you appoint, those appointed bodies of, of the town councils, your advisory bodies. You agreed about a year ago that you would change those to having just one council member as a liaison, as not as a member of voting member of those bodies.
And is that how the affordable housing, I know that we did that for Climate Action, but is that applied to affordable as well?
Um, the afford, no, that is not an advisory body in the same way. I think Councilmember Kohler is correct.
Okay, interesting.
It's similar, you know, there's the Age Friendly Committee, which also has certain roles or the Community Emergency Preparedness Committee, which will be formed soon.
Okay.
Thanks for putting it up.
Thank you. We'll continue on. Councilmember Hellman, do you have?
I don't have any more comments, but were you going to go down this way or how did you want to?
I was just going to go down. Yeah.
You don't have any comments? Oh, okay. So you want to know? Okay, I, I'm, okay, I'm happy. And I have, I have essentially stepped down from CAC. So we can remove that and make that simpler on our, when we go off stage.
For folks in the audience and online, CAC was an acronym for Climate Action Committee.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure that the Housing Element Outreach Communications Ad Hoc Subcommittee. I think that's no longer, we, we really haven't, that was something we set up to help out our former consultants with the outreach and so forth. Would you agree that's, I mean, if you all?
I think we could form it again if we need it.
Okay.
What do you think?
Yeah, and I know you're already doing the.
On the Housing Element Subcommittee, which is not communications.
Right, but it could be in scope if you wanted it to be. Yeah.
I'll just note that that Subcommittee, it was a, a one, a single purpose committee and that purpose ended. And so the, the committee is resolved. So we're not taking an action. It's just a natural death.
Well, I don't know if it's been resolved because we haven't submitted our housing element yet, but I hear your point. Yeah. I would be very interested in sitting on the MCCMC Homeless Subcommittee. I've been, yesterday, spent a few hours on the Cal Cities Seminar with a couple of hundred representatives and something that I'd like to focus on for our community. I also think we should consider having a ad hoc committee that the, that the community can participate in.
For homelessness? Yeah. Well, we can talk about that. Can agendas that at another point in time, too, for a public item on that.
Other than that, no changes.
Okay. I'll go to Vice Mayor Kohler.
I'm, I'm good with what I have. There is a committee that I'm on that as far, it's never met. And I just agreed to be on it because John Reed got off of it, which was Measure K Oversight Committee. And I, if we still need it, I'm happy to stay on it. We haven't issued bonds, I think, since I've been on the council, and that's when you use it. So I guess unless somebody else is craving that committee, I'll stay on it.
Um, yeah, I'm not really sure about that committee. When I first started here nearly 10 years ago, we tried to convene it and many of the, a number of the members had moved out of town.
Okay, well, you just leave me on it for now. And at some point, we should look and see. Because I, I don't believe there's a plan to issue more bonds and that's when that would come into place. And I think, so, um, yeah, just leave me on it for now. Otherwise, I'm fine.
Okay. Councilmember Blash?
Okay, so I've looked at the open assignments. I'll stay on the Affordable Housing Committee. It doesn't meet a lot. But if it's okay to have two members on there, I'll stay on there.
But if it's okay to have two members on there, I'll stay on there unless somebody else really wants it. I'd be happy to be the A-Bag Delegate. I'd actually be happy to be the Chamber of Commerce Liaison, but I'm not sure, you know, go ahead.
Can I bring something up on that? So the mayor meets with the chamber once a month. And when I was mayor way back, a couple of times, Renee was very interested in becoming the Chamber Liaison. And I don't really think, unless the rest of the council really wants to have that, I feel comfortable with the current mayor meeting with the chamber, not having to coordinate. And I think that was just sort of something because Renee had a specific interest in that. So if the rest of the council wants to keep it, fine, but to me, I think it's not necessary. I know Mayor Cutrano is meeting with the chamber monthly and I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, that's good. I was going to say I'd be happy to do it, but I don't know if I have enough background and I feel like it should be somebody who has a little bit more background.
And it's, it's once a month during the day.
Okay, let's see. You know, a lot of these, I am not actually sure, you know, what they're doing right now. I would be interested also in being in the MCCMC Homeless Committee, but you know, I don't need to fight about it. I'm not so sure about the Liaison to the Marin County Office of Education, but I'll go ahead and do that if nobody else is interested in that. And it says not appointed by Town Council anyway. So I'm curious about who, who chooses this. The MCCMC Liaison to the Marin County Office of Education has an asterisk.
MCCMC chooses that.
Exactly. So then I'm going to assume that somebody's going to choose that and not me picking it or someone else picking it. Right? Okay, good. I'm interested in the Measure A Parks Committee. Definitely interested in the Paramedic Authority. I would be interested in the Safe Routes to School Task Force, but I think Chance is the alternate on that. So I'm not sure if he wants to stay or be the person that is on that task force. I'm hap, I would be happy to be on the Zero Waste Committee. I'd also be happy to step up for the Climate Action Committee if that's a need. It's not. Oh, that's right, because we've changed that. Okay, never mind. If there should be a need for someone to do the Pedestrian Trails Ad Hoc Subcommittee, love that project, would be happy to do that. And let's see. Interested in the Transportation Authority of Marin. I think that Bruce is an alternate on that, so.
If, if you, you know, as alternate to Tam, I don't believe I've attended one meeting as alternate. So Chance has been really good about attendance and really good about doing that job. So if you wanted to take on that alternate position so that you could just learn about it and follow it and be on the agenda list and so forth, that would be okay with me.
Yeah.
Taking on the, the full position, the, the primary is a pretty big assignment.
No, I'd be happy to be an alternate.
Can I chime in with one thing? I, if no one's going to take the A-Bag, I was the alternate, I, I'll serve as the delegate. And then the MCCMC Economic Recovery Ad Hoc is no longer. That was for COVID.
Yeah, I just want to chime in. Pedestrian Trails, Councilmember Hellman and I are on that. And I've been on it since the beginning as part of the crew to really, I got things moving along when they were not moving. So I'm, I'm not interested in giving that up at this time. And can I just mention one thing? The Neighborhood Safety Liaison, that I don't know that we need to have that.
It's like as things emerge, as you know.
So I don't, I don't think, I think we should take that one off. And then it looks like the JEPa is open. And I wonder. And I'm not trying to give you assignments, Stephanie, but you're the only one with kids in school. I wonder if that would be.
Oh, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I, I just think you would probably be really good at that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'll chime in here real quick. I just wanted to note, Michelle, one of the things undermined that's not listed is I'm currently serving as the alternate to the Marin Emergency Radio Authority. Police Chief Tabaranzas, the, are a delegate, but I go to the meetings on, in his stead. So one thing to add, I'm happy to transition from some of my alternate positions to the sort of main delegate for Fire Board. I've been going to those meetings, the last couple of meetings. Also Paramedic Authority, but I'm happy, Liesl, if you'd like to, to be the main, I'm, I'm happy to remain the alternate to that. But up, up to you. And same with the, the yellow school bus. I'm happy to remain the alternate to that. And I'm happy to remain the alternate to the Safe Routes to School Task Force. I do attend those quarterly meetings anyway, but both council members can attend those meetings. So I like to be kind of adjacent to some of the transportation stuff, being on the Transportation Authority. But other than that, I'm pretty good.
So can I ask, I think so, for Liesl, I think we have her on the Affordable Housing Committee with me currently. Stephanie as A-Bag Delegate. My question is, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Ad Hoc Subcommittee, is that something we're still doing?
It kind of.
So it's sort of ad hoc and sort of done for now?
Yeah.
And if it needs to be recreated, so we should.
We can recreate it.
And then we have the Homeless Subcommittee goes to Stephanie. The liaison, oh, that's MCCMC, Measure A Parks Committee, Liesl. And then Ross Valley Fire Board Mayor, Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, Liesl. Ross Valley School Board Liaison Alternate, is that Liesl? I don't know. Ross Valley JEPa, Stephanie, Safe Routes to School, Task Force, Liesl, Zero Waste Committee, Liesl.
And then one other thing I would say is by me becoming the Fire Board Rep, the alternate opens up. So Liesl, if you want to be the alternate to the Fire Board.
I'd like to be there.
Okay.
But I don't want to fight over anything. I would be interested in being the alternate if that, that's okay. Are you okay with that? Okay.
Or do you, I'm on, I'm the alternate for Marin Wildfire Prevention. I'm happy to give that up. If you want to.
Do you want to be the alternate?
It's fascinating and really well organized. And then is, could we formalize an ad hoc this evening on homelessness, a local, not an MCCMC?
No, I'm getting a shaking head from our clerk.
Okay.
But we can agendas it for, for the.
Why don't we talk about it? It's a retreat.
Anyway, it will have to come back.
It'll have to come back.
As an agendas item so that people in the public would know that you're talking about it and could chime in.
Yeah.
Thank you. This is a agendas item. We should probably go out to the public, actually write for public comment on this item. So do we want to do that now?
It's a great idea, yes.
Great. So we'll open public comment on the Board and Committee Assignments.
Mark Bell Fairfax. You like Sierra? Racial Equity Social Justice. It was a disaster, especially after the few people who could actually do anything resigned. It's been there. It doesn't have a quorum. It hasn't had a quorum. It's time to remove it from the town website. There's no reason for it. There wasn't one to begin with. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Michael McIntosh. I appreciate that you guys all have an interest in different things. And I appreciate that some of these things are very important to other people, maybe more so than yourself. When you're up here to do business for the town, you have to prioritize those things. And I think that the things that are most important to this town of where we are, as we just heard from last presentation, that we're approaching these cliffs. And now we have to do something without really forethought. We've passed that cliff for the housing element. We've now approaching a cliff for our fire department. I really think that this council should prioritize the amount of time they spend on all these different committees and focus at the business at hand, the things that keep this town running, the things that will ensure we have a town, and the things that won't come back to bite us. And I really think from my position, I really see failure. And I know it's offensive if I come up here and say this, but unless we get enough public coming up and calling you guys out for not completing the basic needs, nothing is getting done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi there, Philip Solivary, Fairfax. I would like to pick up on what Michael McIntosh just said and, and emphasize that the homeless problem here is really becoming way more severe than it has been. And I just think that that's something that we need to deal with before we get to the cliff. It feels like there are things that can be done and should be done right now, today. And it takes leadership and I hope you guys will focus on that as well as the housing element, as well as rent stabilization ordinances. And of course, the fire discussion we had here earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any folks on Zoom, Michelle?
Just a moment. I need to stop sharing my screen to see that. Yes, there are. All right. So Lisa is first, followed by Mallory G, followed by Liz Frona Burger. Lisa, you're unmuted now. If you would like to offer your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So this is Lisa Cerabella. I live on Alima Road in Fairfax. And I noticed that both Councilmember Hellman and the mayor are on the Rent Control Just Cause Eviction Committee. And I wanted to suggest, and I know there was some mention a moment ago about only having two people on a committee, but I wanted to suggest that if people have opposing views, that would be helpful to have a person with an opposing view on the committee. So if somebody didn't vote for rent control, just cause eviction, and somebody did vote for just cause and rent control, then those two opposing opinions should be on the committee, in my humble opinion, because you need to hear different voices. To have two council members, or in this case, the mayor and the council member, who have a similar view on rent control and just cause eviction to be on the same committee, you know, you're just preaching to the choir. And it's nice for, it would be very important, in my opinion, to have somebody else from the committee, from the town council, who has an opposing view to share that committee.
Thank you. Michelle, real quick, on that committee, is that committee also kind of moot now that?
Yes, I would say so. When rent control first, and just cause eviction first came to the council, it was pretty complex and big issue. And you did, the council as a group chose to appoint Councilmember Hellman and Mayor Cutrano to this Ad Hoc Subcommittee to do some of the research and legwork. To bring it to the council. So that's over because you did.
So we can strike that from these assignments. Great.
Yes, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, so.
Hi, sorry about that. Yes, my understanding is that Ad Hoc Subcommittee has sunset with the passage of the ordinances. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, but just wanted to clarify that. Great. We'll take the next speaker on Zoom, please.
Okay, the next speaker is Mallory, followed by Liz Frona Burger. And Mallory, you're unmuted now.
Hi, you good? Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, I just, I just want to back up what Michael and the gentleman be, be after him said. I agreed with both of them completely. I also think we have to prioritize. And I also strongly agree with, we've got to deal with, with this homeless situation, either in a town meeting or some way that we can address this. I know we have, there's legal things about it, but there's also legal things about having our kids have a healthy place to play and to not get whatever diseases they're throwing into the water and the, and the land now. And so I just, I want to back up the last two speakers and put my voice in that, yes, we have to prioritize. Because this, this particular, this, this homeless thing is, is particularly, I think, important. And I'm also very happy to, to have the Affordable Housing Committee, having a committee. So hopefully we, we will meet. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Liz Frona Burger, and you're unmuted now. Liz?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I was just going to back up what Philip Solivary said about the importance of getting some of the priorities straight in terms of what our town needs to deal with. And then Lisa brought up the, the, the comment about having people who had different opinions on one of the rental, and I'm sorry, the, the paper or the slide that it, that's down now about what committees were dealing with the rent ordinance and the just cause eviction ordinance. And so she said it would be good to have people who didn't have the same opinion on it. And I thought that sounded like a great idea. But then the attorney said that that committee had sunsetted. So is there some other committee that's going to continue to be working with the rent and just cause eviction ordinances? Because as you guys have noticed, it's been a bit of a conflict. Was there another committee on there that's going to continue?
It's just the council at this time. But the council could establish another committee.
Okay. All right, well, then y'all have a lot of work to be done because the town is still very divided on all of that. So I guess I'm going to take this moment, it's unscripted, but I really hope that this workshop is going to be managed by a professional moderator, which I understand you said the town didn't have money for. But the town had better find some money for that. Because that, that workshop is going to, is going to tell us a lot about what the town council really thinks and how to go forward. And that's my comment for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tony Gardner, and you're unmuted now. You might have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the MCCMC Homelessness Subcommittee. And I really appreciate that so many people are interested in that work. I work on homelessness. I, I do want to point out that I think that that I would really love to see Liesl on that committee, although I'm happy, you know, that, you know, Stephanie's on it too. I just think that this is a great op, with somebody with Liesl's skills and knowledge on, in the area of housing and poverty and homelessness, this would be, be a great opportunity to really move forward on that. So I just wanted to put a plug on that. But you know, whatever you guys want to do is great. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kathy Flores. Sorry, I forgot to alert you sooner, followed by Georgia Gibbs. And Kathy, you're unmuted now.
Okay, do you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I'm just pretty much going to read what I sent to everybody.
Great. So I'm just pretty much going to read what I sent to everybody. Good evening, I'm not sure where to start. Many of our residents in Fairfax are mad, angry, sad about so many problems that have been going on in Fairfax that I don't have time to talk about them all. So I'll just pick one. Some things need to be done to remove the homeless from Perry Park to permanent housing. It seems as of yesterday afternoon, the pavilion staff person has left for now. I'm tired of hearing that nothing can be done, including our maintenance person, I won't say his name, who is sick and tired of this mess. Why are they refusing to be housed? Because there's rules to follow, no drugs, no drinking, no swearing, no peeing, defecating in public, no fires, no pile of debris, no responsibility for anything. Why are they given a choice? If they are mentally incapable to care for themselves, they need help from HHD to be removed and placed in a safe environment for themselves and for others. Aren't they in violation of Fairfax's code 9.04.050? Parents, grandparents and children have to make safe decisions. Do we go to the park and tell the kids, well, you just can't go down to the creek because it's contaminated? You can't throw rocks. What if it splashes in your face? Town parks were preserved and designed to give people time to relax in nature and kids to explore, not campsites for two to four people and their many daily visitors. And who knows what goes on after dark? If anyone sets up camp on your sidewalk in front of your house, what are you going to do? Are you going to call the police to have them removed? Are you going to leave them there? Why aren't police doing anything for our town? Has the town councils instructed them not to interfere? Have the town council police, the town council police are visiting and tailing and know them on a first name basis? That means nothing to me. Can't you see that turning a blind eye and hoping that this will disappear or not draw attention to Fairfax is failing? There's many things on social media, people taking art classes, they can't stand the smoke that they're smelling. Another said the police can only do so much. Really? We pay their wages, not the homeless who set up camp. With the rains, where's all their ruined items going? You know, we're hiring a dumpster, more money out of Fairfax to put their shit, to put their stuff into. Manner was to have their family dance at the pavilion, but oh, we can't do that because of the homeless. You know, and Chance said, well, we could nicely ask them to move away for a few hours. That's ridiculous. I am not the only one who is sick and tired of these encampments. We don't feel safe anymore walking in Fairfax. Figure something out soon before it really does get too late to do anything. And I have one more thing. Why is it that we could see the attorney on Zoom, her face, when we can't see our faces on Zoom? And maybe someone could answer that, maybe the tech guy could answer it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to remind folks, one, to not use profane language. Please refrain from it, I should say, but also this is specifically for item number two, to discuss and consider town council board and committee assignments. It's not a time for public comment for items not on the agenda. Just wanted to note that for other folks on Zoom who plan to speak, but thank you.
The next speaker is Georgia Gibbs and she is the last speaker. Georgia, you're unmuted now. You might have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. I just want to comment on, one of the issues I have noticed with the town is that townspeople and possibly in general seem to be non receptive to growing a healthier community through better revenues. You know, better business district, more support for business, more sales tax, things like that, that could go to offset a lot of the programs that we've looked at if we were able to kind of focus on that. And I bring that into this discussion because I noticed that there was only one mention of anything to do with how the town can improve its financial standing. And that was the mayor going to the chamber meetings, which are not real active that I'm aware of. So anyway, I just think this is an area that deserves its own committee and needs a lot more focus and input both the council taking measures and also getting town input in how to grow a healthier community in this way. I think the, by the chant always here, we don't want another Mill Valley is a dead chant. Nobody wants another Mill Valley. But there are ways to grow a healthy community that do not encompass creating a community that's alien to its constituents. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no more speakers.
Okay, we'll take it back to the dais here. I don't think there's any formal action we need to take on this. Or is there, do we need a motion to approve the current?
Yes, and can I just ask a couple of questions? I tried to take notes, but I think it would be nice to have a final rundown.
Yeah, sounds good.
I didn't hear who the Ross Valley School Board liaison alternate would be. I don't believe that is one of Liesl's areas of interest.
Is Councilmember Hellman the current representative?
Are you? Yeah.
There's some things coming up that we should, I would appreciate having, not necessarily, I mean, Renee did and I did it together. I don't know.
I'm happy to do it as mayor for if.
Yeah, I mean, I'll do it. I just thought it's
Yeah.
Less of an area of expertise than some of the others.
You don't have to have a child.
For it.
It's not a pre-call.
I'm going to do it.
Thank you very much. Others, Michelle?
I'm just making sure. I think they all look like they've been filled.
Are you going to review them for us?
Yes, I, do you feel like you reached consensus?
Who's the A-bag delegate?
I think it was.
I mean, the, sorry, the alternate?
You both were interested in that. You're the current alternate, you're the delegate, you were interested, but do you want to be the alternate and you be, move up to the delegate? Does that work?
Sure.
Cool.
Would you like me to read what I, the changes I heard? And you make a vote. Did you have any other that you felt were unresolved? Does everyone feel comfortable right now? Liesl, I mean, council member Blash, sorry.
I would just say that if we do something further with homeless issues, I'd love to do it, but I'm fine with where we are right now.
Okay, so the changes that we do have right now would be, and I'm just, would you like me to put the screen up again, actually? I can. I can operate many pieces of equipment at once.
You're doing fabulous.
There we go. So. So the changes to Mayor Cutrano's assignments are, he is taking on the Ross, we're removing the rent control ad hoc subcommittee. And he's taking the Ross Valley Fire Department Board alternate. Regular position. And yes, and I have Barbara Kohler as the alternate. Okay, the next one, Vice Mayor Kohler.
Well, wait a minute. So the mayor wanted to be Mira alternate.
The mayor is Mira alternate. That's done by a formal resolution. That's actually a different process. It's not on here for that reason. You guys don't assign that and actually.
Okay. And then just to be clear, we took the DEI ad hoc subcommittee, deleted that. Housing Element Outreach Communications deleted that.
Yes.
Rent Control Just Cause.
Neighborhood Safety Liaison was also, right, removed.
Neighborhood Safety Liaison.
Yes.
Removed. Okay.
And outreach and communication.
Yeah, we got that.
Yes, sorry, I didn't mention those. And then I guess we could note that the mayor and vice mayor each have been assigned to the committees that are always for the mayor and vice mayor to do. So as those, that role switches, so do those responsibilities. So Vice Mayor Kohler, you have taken on the Ross Valley Fire Department Board alternate position. And you're staying on the pedestrian trails. I didn't see any other or hear any other changes.
No.
Did I miss one?
That was the only change.
Okay. Councilmember Ackerman, you, wait, did we? No, you are the alternate. Never mind, that was already there. You're remaining the liaison to the Climate Action Committee. And you were going off the TAM alternate position. Did you give that to Liesl? Was that my understanding?
I offered it.
You offered it.
Are you interested in?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I understood.
I'll do that.
Okay. And for Councilmember Hellman, you have taken over the A-bag primary position as delegate and given the alternate position to Councilmember Blash. Housing Element Outreach and Communications is gone.
So is CAC.
So is CAC, yeah, I have that also, sorry. Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, you offered that alternate position to Councilmember Blash. And Councilmember Blash is interested in that, I believe. And then we took off the Rent Control Just Cause Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Does that sound right?
And she has the MCCMC Homeless Subcommittee.
Oh, right, it's not listed there, but it's, I have it down here. Okay, yes.
And JIPA.
And JIPA. Yeah, I'm getting to the open assignments list.
Okay.
Sorry, I should be scrolling down. Oops, for the public. Okay. So looking at the open assignments, Affordable Housing Committee, Councilmember Blash will be joining as a council member. It's worth noting that she was formerly on it as a member of the community. The A-bag delegate alternate is now under Councilmember Blash with this primary delegate going to Councilmember Hellman. The Chamber of Commerce Liaison, we've left out for now. That was a particular interest of former Councilmember Goddard. The DEI Ad Hoc Subcommittee, we have removed. The MCCMC Economic Recovery Ad Hoc Committee is apparently sunsetted. The MCCMC Homeless Subcommittee, both council members Hellman and Blash were interested in this. And I think it landed with Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I was just looking.
Councilmember Blash said she was fine.
Okay.
For now.
The next one is appointed by the MCCMC Measure A Park Subcommittee, Councilmember Blash. The Neighborhood Safety Liaison, the council decided to pause on that. Ross Valley Fire Department Board Primary Board Member is Mayor Cutrano. Ross Valley Paramedic Authority is Councilmember Blash. Ross Valley School Board Liaison Alternate is also Councilmember Blash. The yellow bus, yellow school bus JIPA is Councilmember Hellman. Safe Routes to School Task Force is Councilmember Blash. And Zero Waste Committee, Councilmember Blash.
And MWPA alternate.
And the, I think I read that earlier.
That was from Hellman.
Yes, I read that earlier. And the Transportation Authority of Marin, Councilmember Blash.
I think I'm an alternate.
Alternate, sorry, I should have said alternate. And that was from Councilmember Ackerman. And that's all the changes I have. Did I miss one?
That sounded good.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion then?
Yeah, will someone make a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion Kohler, second Blash. Can I get a roll call vote, Michelle?
Yes, Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Blash.
Yes.
And Mayor Cutrano.
Yes.
All eyes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That motion passes and we can move on to our final item of the evening. Item number three, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute an amended and restated agreement with Fourleaf Inc. for contract planning planner services, which was continued from the February 1st regular town council meeting. Town Manager Abrams.
Thank you. So just to remind the council of this item, this is for contract planning services for all planning types of services. We have a very important need for long-term planning in our planning department. And we have here tonight David Waltering, who has been our interim planning director and has a wealth of expertise and experience. Unfortunately, he is a retiree and his time is limited. So his last day will be very soon, the end of this month. And in addition to that opening, we've had two failed recruitments for that position. It is a very, very difficult job market for employers, particularly in Marin County and for Fairfax specifically. We have, as you know, a number of very important and time-critical projects that need to be worked on by that planner. And that includes the housing element first and foremost, as you know, short-term rental program, parklets, rent stabilization and just cause eviction. We do not have any other long-term planners within our department. So we really need those services. And we have identified a very, with David's help, a very qualified firm, Fourleaf, that has a very qualified staff member in particular that we have started to use. As you know, this item was originally scheduled for January and we have a need for that work right now. And so I started that contract under the town manager's authority. And the request tonight is to continue that as we make this transition to, you know, filling that director role and also completing a lot of these projects. And I also want to point out that this staff report that I drafted, that you see before you really is only talking about the already committed projects. So those are either legal requirements like the housing element or other projects that the council has already determined a policy on. There are many projects still to come. Once we adopt the housing element, then we will have programs to implement, which are in the housing element. And we will have rezoning to accomplish. And we will have to be working with, you know, those people who may want to add housing to our community for our residents. All of that work needs staff and cannot be done, you know, just by volunteers or by the town manager alone. And David's here, if you have questions specific to that position or the, you know, the firm, that kind of thing.
Great, thank you. Questions? Vice Mayor Cole.
Sure. So I just wanted to make sure I understood. So your last day is the end of this month, correct? Okay. And then if we don't have someone, what happens with our various projects? There's no one to pick those up, right?
Right, so we actually experienced this before. When I got here, there was no planning director, right? And so then we were trying to fill that in. I would say that was a very difficult time for our staff. And we really need that support. We have a very small, highly committed staff in the planning department and throughout the town, but they can only do so much.
And then the final question is, like, how long would it take to go into contract with someone at this point?
To go in?
To get the contract finalized so that someone's actually in that position working. Because I just, I'm hearing people like feeling like. Because I just, I, I'm hearing people like feeling like they want it to be put off. But I'm just wondering, like, you know, if we started today, how soon could someone be in such a situation?
So actually because of the delay in January, then I, I have started Dan, uh, working here. So he, he has been with us, um, for a very limited number of hours. But, uh, if we were to stop doing that, then work would essentially grind to a halt.
Vice Mayor Kohler?
Yeah, and, um, I've already raised these issues to you. My concern is for a five-months contract. It's looking like about $28,000 a month. And which is extraordinary amount of money. And at least from my reading of the contract and asking questions beforehand, we know that David comes with decades of experience and he's just been a wonderful addition. We wish we could keep him. But I don't hear that this firm would, we will have a bridge. We don't, we've tried to go out on recruitment for some time. And I know there's at least five openings for planning directors in Marin alone and many in the Bay Area. Probably because of all these housing elements, if nothing else. But I don't see that we have someone that will be overseeing the planning department as a whole. That very much concerns me. I don't want to be where we were at when you first came in. And we really lost some time because we had nobody overseeing things. And I wasn't clear from the staff report, you mentioned some of the things once we get the housing element done. But it wasn't clear to me, there is a lot of, uh, back and forth on next door about saying this is only for the rent control, rent stabilization. That isn't true. And I think it would be helpful, number one, to talk about what are we going to do with the bridge? Because we don't have a planning director coming in tomorrow. At least from reading this, I don't see that this person will serve as the planning director in addition to doing what these other tasks are. So how are we going to deal with that? Why is it 28,000 a month? And then what are the tasks? I think it's worthwhile to really spell out what we see just today in addition to where we see us going with the housing element and the need for all the zoning and the other implementation tasks. So I know that's a lot, but I have provided to these two before. And I think it's important for the public to understand, we are in a very difficult position right now.
I'll take maybe the last first, which is, um, you're absolutely correct. This is not, um, only about rent stabilization and just cause eviction. This is about all planning tasks. We need to have either staff or contract planners to be able to do this work and serve. Fundamental to being a town is that we need to have staff to provide the services that, um, you know, our residents expect that, that are, we're legally required to do. So that is, um, absolutely correct. I want to make sure that's really clear. And, um, then as far as that bridge, we are very fortunate that, um, we've identified a consultant, uh, or contractor that, um, uh, has been a planning director before, so has those skills and can also do project work. So that helps us quite a bit. And, um, this is a rare breed at this point. It is very, very difficult. We have reached out to a number of other agencies, a number of, um, firms. And so I feel really good about this, um, step forward as opposed to having nothing or continuing to look. That is really not an option in my mind. Um, and then I would say as far as managing the department, of course, I'll be able to help with that. We really need that expertise. That's something that's really, really critical. And then I want to turn it over to David because I know he's, you know, also done a lot of thinking about sort of how do we get through this very difficult time?
So Heather, thank you very much. As, as I look at this situation, I think that Fourleaf offers a bridge. And the, the person that they've assigned to the town of Fairfax is, is very experienced, has over 25 years of experience. And he has been a community development director, has been a planning director, has processed applications, has established and set up programs. Uh, so he's very experienced and I think that as the town manager indicated, the town is in a circumstance where you do really need a bridge. You can't just say, we're not going to go forward with this. You need a bridge. Fortunately, I think very fortunately, because I know there's been a lot of outreach to try to fill this position. There is an individual, there is a firm that can provide that bridge for you. And I've been working with the consultant for the past week and a half or so, familiarizing him with a broad range of programs that have been approved, have been mandated, um, and his focus, his primary focus really as I think needs to be, is the housing element update. And I think that as we look at programs, we have to realize that each and every program that's adopted, even if you have outside consultants, requires coordination, management, public outreach, gathering information from the organization and getting it to the consultant team, proofreading, facilitating meetings, coordination, on and on and on. The individual that I'm talking about has been working with me on that in terms of working with Diet and Batia, the housing element consultant. And I think that's extremely important to make sure that there is that bridge with the housing element to keep that moving forward. Diet and Batia is a well-experienced firm, but they need internal staff here to facilitate the movement of information back and forth, coordination of meetings, knowing the sites. And even though as a consultant you come in and you may not know the community directly, you facilitate, you talk to staff members, you talk to the manager, you talk to people in the community and you get the information to the consultant team. So that's key. In addition, there, there are other programs, the Parklets Program, the Short-Term Rentals Program, the Rent Stabilization and Just Cause Evictions Program. There's coordination in terms of what's to come with the housing element. As, as we know with the housing element, there will be a number of implementation programs, rezonings, projects, meeting with developers. This individual has had that full experience, processing applications, developing ordinances, et cetera. Frankly, given what's on the table, what's been adopted and mandated by the state and mandated by the state. And given the staffing levels in the department, I mean, currently, there's basically a vacant director position I've been filling. There's one principal planner full-time. There's a three-quarter time assistant planner and a full-time building official. That's it. I, I've been doing this for about 35 years. That is not a lot of staff. You have a tremendous amount on your plate here. The staff is diligent. They're excellent. But the workload is way beyond what they can complete, way beyond. Frankly, you not only need a full-time director, you need additional permanent experienced staff that will provide continuity and information for your community and yourselves over time. What, what the town manager is offering and we've worked together to try to bring forward is really a bridge. But you do need a permanent solution. And that is going to take focus. But I think you really need to seize this opportunity, work with it, continue your recruitment for the permanent director and really assess, given your aspirations, given what you're trying to achieve and state mandates, what the staffing levels could and should be for this community. So, um, I, I, I hope you move forward with giving direction to the town manager to execute this agreement. We've started, uh, we've started training this individual, familiarizing him with these programs and, and staff. And, and it is a bridge. So I would recommend that you move forward with, with this resolution tonight.
Just one follow-up question. So, uh, Mr. Hortert.
Yes.
Would he be overseeing the department as a whole in addition to working on some of these tasks? Which would mean as well, attending the planning commission meetings and, you know, so I think what I see is we've got, uh, Linda and Cara working really hard as well as Mark. But I think there needs to be sort of a, an overseeing role. And I didn't get that from the contract that he would fulfill that as well. And that's what I'm, you know, before you were here, when Heather first started, we were really relying on our attorney to try to fill that role at the planning commission. And, and she did a great job and used to be a planner many years ago, but it really wasn't working. So I just don't want to see a hole. And I'm supportive of a bridge as long as we can fulfill that, that hole too and not leave our staff trying to manage the planning commission without kind of an overseeing steady hand.
I think that in response to your question, the, the contract planner would work with the town manager and work closely with the town manager. The town manager is going to provide, provide ultimate direction. But I think that the contract planner that's been identified has been a community development director. He's been attending our staff meetings the last two weeks. I've introduced him to staff, introduced him to some public members. I think that again, I'm going to use this word, he can be that transition or bridge individual. Ultimately, the, the town manager, the town council is going to need to find a permanent director. But right, right now, this individual with, with the town manager can provide that guidance with your current staff, your current planning and building staff. So it would be basically working together with the town manager and the current staff to see you through this next period of time until you can get a permanent director. And as, as I would recommend, it's, it's beyond getting a permanent director. There's a need to really look at the department, look at the mandates and adopted programs and determine the true staffing needs to provide the services that you want to provide for your community. But this is a bridge. It's a transition.
Okay. I, I don't want to belabor this. And I'm not to scream that we need a permanent director. I would love to have one. And I realize, but I just want to know, will Dan be attending planning commission meetings or will Heather be attending planning commission meetings? What I don't want to see is our staff who already are working at full speed ahead. And those meetings can be pretty difficult, having to do those on their own and providing a guidance, you know, overseeing the department, either it's Heather during this bridge time as we seek a permanent director. So I just want to make sure that, you know, our staff are all stressed, as we know. I don't want to add to that stress by not having kind of a steady hand helping them through some of those difficult meetings.
So to answer your question directly, yes, I think that Dan can provide that steady hand, that guidance in conjunction with Heather, your town manager. I think that Dan can attend those meetings. He's done that in the past. Um, I checked references. I spoke with a local town manager who worked with Dan in the past and, and said that Dan had come into a circumstance in a, in a Marin County community where they were adopting a very controversial ordinance. Dan stepped in and he said he was the steady hand. He was the person that kind of got to know what was needed to be done quickly, worked with the public commissioners, the council, the manager and got it done. So I think that, uh, in reference checks, in talking to people at Fourleaf, um, and kind of explaining the circumstance here, Dan was highly recommended.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry for putting you through the wringer.
It's okay. No problem.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question on to that too? Just looking at Dan's experience, I, it wasn't clear to me for the selected professional experience. It was really great to see the Community Development Director roles, specifically in City of Larkspur and Salcelito, which are here in Marin and, you know, similar in size. It's not like a big, big city, Community Development Director, but, uh, in front of the cities, it says Fourleaf Inc. And so I wasn't sure, was he, did he do that work before joining Fourleaf or was he serving, excuse you? The, was he serving in those roles on behalf of Fourleaf as a contract communities development director?
Mr. Mayor, he was performing that work as a contractor through Fourleaf. But as you read his extensive resume, extensive resume, Mr. Hortert has worked for a broad range of communities directly over the years. He's had multiple roles as principal planner, planning manager, et cetera. But to answer your question specifically, those positions were under contract through Fourleaf.
Great. That's actually really helpful because that's what I, I think in a similar vein, just want to make sure, it's a, a limited capacity stepping in, in a way, but like also it's like drinking from the fire hose a little bit. When you come in and, and play that role as Community Development Director, Director of Planning on a count, contract basis temporarily. So that's really helpful to know. I wanted to also ask as a sort of follow-up, do we, do we have a sense of a timeline for the permanent piece that's going to help us, uh, because as Vice Mayor Kohler mentioned, this is, um, you know, a stopgap that is costly on a per month basis. And, um, yeah, we, we, we saw that last year where we didn't have someone. And then we saw the, the budget for our town attorney's, uh, firm increase as they shouldered some of that. But, um, what's, what's the sort of runway we have or the timeline we have for the, the permanent solution?
So, um, a recruitment will take several months and, um, we have had those two failed recruitments so far. So in those processes, we, um, uh, you know, did lots of advertising and reaching out to potential candidates, um, near and far. Um, and what we found is that, um, we, uh, essentially couldn't afford to, um, hire someone who was at that level, who was, um, at or near the director level already. And as you know, there's been a number of, um, directors, planning directors within Marin who've sort of moved spots already in the last year. And there are many openings as well. And then, um, in addition, we struggle, I would say, as a, as a community because we have, um, very high cost of living within Marin. The, you know, salaries don't meet that. And so we are having a very difficult time to recruit someone. So we will do that again. But I, I don't have, you know, in two months, you're going to have a new director.
Got it. I just didn't know if we had a plan for continuing to work with the same firm through the last two failed recruitments or if we had a plan to?
Yeah. So I, I would need to bring to you a new contract for a new recruiter and that's something we need to talk about.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I just have quick questions. Thank you, everyone. So far this has been really helpful and I'm really pleased with, um, how Dan looks on paper. It sounds like he's, uh, been good so far. So thank you. My question is just to expand on what Vice Mayor was asking around, um, you know, the activities, but I'd like to kind of get into the nitty gritty and just understand, you know, um, I don't know if it's a day in the life, but I, I'd like to really understand, um, what the engagement with Diet and Batia is like right now? Is that daily engagement? My, my sense is that from a project standpoint, this is a really intense period and it will be for the next 90 to 120 days. Is that true? We're talking about the housing element. Is that accurate?
Yes, that, that is accurate. And so for example, to give you an idea of some of the things that we've been doing and I've been doing with the team, the Diet and Bontia team, and also with, with the contract planner. We've been visiting, uh, sites, potential housing sites, reaching out to property owners, setting up and conducting meetings with property owners. A, a key thing that's being done right now is really going through the sites list. The, the housing, housing sites list and. The, the housing, housing sites list and forming those up in terms of making sure that as those would be presented to HCD, Housing and Community Development, that they truly are viable sites in terms of the yield, proposed yield, that they would also reach the income levels or could reach the income levels being identified in our regional housing needs allocation arena. And so the focus has really been that. So in terms of a day in the life of, it's been reaching out to property owners, visiting sites, making contacts. We're in the process of setting up a property owner forum, a Zoom forum. We've met with several property owners as well. And we're reviewing documents and providing edits. And, and Dan has been involved in that in terms of reviewing documents, setting up meetings, directly involved in those things. And right now it is an intense period because the idea is to really kind of bring together the administrative housing element itself and to present that to the subcommittee and staff as soon as possible. End of the month, first of March, likely first part of March, have it reviewed and edited and then get it out for the required 30-day public review. So we're really in quite an intense period. And as I mentioned, uh, in terms of the staff work, it's the back and forth. I mean, the consultants prepare reports. They need to be reviewed and edited. They need to have meetings set up. Um, there's a tremendous amount of work involved in that, in that alone. And.
And so, so supporting the state compliance effort of updating the housing element.
Yes.
Will be the lion's share of the focus and frankly, the dollars spent here. Is that also accurate?
That, that's the primary focus right now and it has to be. It has to be the primary focus given the mandate and that we're behind.
Right.
As, as we all know, so that, that is the focus right now. Um, but there are these other programs we've already mentioned, the town manager and myself mentioned as well. So I've shared information about all of those programs with the consultant, asked him to review, you know, the ordinances adopting those programs, getting background information so that as there's a need to assist, the town manager, other staff members, consultants or whatnot, he can step in in a variety of areas. The primary focus right now is housing element, but um, he's going to be able to, and, and we need, the town needs him and whomever in this position to be nimble and be able to shift into other areas and provide support to the other planners, like the assistant planner. She's, uh, doing a great job. She's taking the lead on, on working with Granicus Host Compliance in terms of establishing, setting up the town's short-term rental program. But again, having somebody like the contract planner, given his experience and whatnot.
Sure.
Familiar with the program, he can provide advice and support, as well as the town manager, but be that intermediary, that transition person. So, we're trying to familiarize him with the broad range, but the immediate focus is housing element.
Thank you.
And just had one more question. So, um, you know, I looked at the, uh, total prelim, preliminary estimated fees. And then I'm just wondering if, um, so this is obviously a person who's onsite and able to meet with people in person. Are we likely to incur a lot of travel costs, um, above and beyond this or is that?
No. No, the, the idea is that the, the contractor comes here, his hours are for the work here or if he's working remotely for his work remote, not travel time, but work in the office or work at home. Let's say if he's working remotely.
Right. Cause I'm just seeing this line that says, uh, reimbursable airfare, lodging, rental car, et cetera, will be at cost plus 20%, et cetera, et cetera. And so I just wasn't sure if this was someone who's going to be doing a lot of travel that needs to be covered or not. Sounds like not. Okay. Great.
Questions?
No, I'm, I don't have any further questions right now.
Okay. I just had one more to piggyback on, uh, Councilmember Hellman's comments. Uh, so, and also a little bit of Vice Mayor Kohler. So it sounds like, um, he will be able to, uh, staff, uh, planning commission meetings. Will he basically be, um, for lack of a better word, the project manager for the housing element for the town for this, for, through its completion essentially?
Again, I would say during the transition. So, um, and, and that's critical, uh, getting this information, moving this information back and forth is critical. So as the town, as the town manager in town hire a permanent director, then I think the permanent director would work with the manager to deter, to determine exactly how the housing element and other projects are managed. But in the meantime, as I say, I would leave, um, at the end of the month, I would fully expect that, uh, this contract planner would be the primary contact. He would be the, the intermediary, working with the town manager and the staff and working with Diet and Bhattia facilitator back and forth. Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, and then the other thing was, so he'll be in, it sounds like he'll be in the office. He'll be in staff meetings, like planning team meetings?
Yes, and he has been. So we've, he's been here a little over a week, week and a half or so. And during that time, we've had two planning and building staff meetings. We have weekly staff meetings to kind of check in, uh, small group, but I mentioned who they are. But to, you know, get a sense of what people are working on, they need assistance or, or whatnot and to track projects. So he has been in those meetings and he has been, uh, on the premises three days a week, actually four days one week.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions from colleagues? No? Okay. We'll open it up now to public comment.
Thank you, Council. Michael Mc, McIntosh. I'll certainly take advantage of my entire five minutes since I'm representing 65 people at your altering where they might be living. I'd like to stick with the same common theme this evening of failure. So looking at my property and housing element through my lens, when you hired EMC, EMC had their public discussion. When Ben Berto shared that my property was to be kept off the list and I called back on that, I was invited into Fairfax. Fairfax, which was Ben Berto and Andy Flower said, what can we do here? Would you build 350, 450 units on your property? And I said, cut it in half, 400. I said, fine, but I want to BID to protect my tenants, my local community. They said, that's fine. We move forward. At that time, right there, you could have satisfied your, your Reno numbers and you could move forward. But instead we went to the balance beam software. We allowed, according to Barbara, approximately 6,000 inquiries. Of those 6,000 inquiries, the total allocated my property 161 units. Again, this was a balanced beam. And under EMC's leadership, again, you could have satisfied your housing element, move forward and not be at this place we're at right now. But instead, Ben Berto is terminated. Andy Flower and his group EMC as well as, um, ELS and Grace Kim were terminated without prejudice. There's no mutual release between the consultants. This town terminated them. Andy wasn't even certain who was hired because I spoke to him personally. I'm glad to have David here and even when David first came here, he also reached out to me, although currently there's meetings with property owners which I excluded from. But when Andy was terminated, it again put us behind the eight ball. Again, this is a common theme with this council. I don't see that we're able to keep good staff. Look at even before David came here, before Heather came here. Maybe you guys need to really look in the mirror and say, what is wrong? What are we doing that we can't keep the staff that we're throwing more and more money at? There's a lot of people I'd like to work here. I know even Jim Moore would probably come back. Ben Berto could come back. So these are references that could help us. But so then we hire Diet, excuse me, I always mess up their name, Diet and Bahia. And in their employment contracts, and now we've passed 500 grand with EMC. We bring up another $621,000 and it's contingent on their employment saying, hey, if you want to get this done, we've got to include these 25 acres. But as soon as that comes out and they're employed, again, my property is excluded and I've sent correspondence to all of you guys to that. So then because of your own personal agendas or agenda, we have now another failure. We've come past our point. We don't have a concluded housing element. We're losing somebody that could have marshaled this through for you again. That's a very nice person, but again, we're losing it for another person because you're throwing more and more money at it. We don't have a concluded project. This is not a reflection on our staff. It's a reflection on the guidance, the council that micromanages everything. It's a failure. And now with the same staff and the same overload, you've now burdened them with another thing that's destroying the town, the just cause and the rent control. These are additional things that we're up here kind of dance around like what these projects are working on. You're giving them an unfair burden of requirements when you don't even have the staff. You don't have the finances. Where do you think this is going to come from? Again, this isn't your constituents that are failing. It's not your staff that's failing. It's the guidance from this council, whether there's conversations in the background, conversations in front of us, if it's an individual's agenda, but the collective effort is a failure. And I really wish that you would think about that. There are lots of people that'd like to come to help this town, but you'll never acquire those people with any quality until you can provide a working environment that they want to work at and don't think it's a bunch of nuts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Heather, um, just to clarify again, the reason that we're losing our interim planning director has to do with CalPERS retirement rules.
That's right. Actually, we've experienced this before. So any CalPERS retiree can work for a CalPERS agency for a maximum of 960 hours in a fiscal year. And that is a limitation on that particular person. It is not something where they can go to another agency. Um, it is not something where they can kind of push it. Um, it becomes a very serious impact on their retirement. So I would never advise that for, you know, anyone.
Right. Thank you for clarifying. Please.
Sierra Salem. Um, Michael's a hard act to follow. Um, there I go saying, um, again, and nobody's like barking or doing anything to remind me. We're all nuts. And as for building 100 units or 600 units on the country club or anywhere else in town, we're all nuts. I'm trying not to swear here. Um, there I go saying, um, again, stop that. Our problem is population, period. And our electrochemical makeup personalities. We live in a little fishbowl here. There's not a lot of ingress. There's not a lot of egress. We've got fires. We've got lack of water. Where are we going to put all these houses? We're going to put them up with our solar collectors and Diablo Canyon extension for, to supply all our electric that we don't have? To supply out, to charge all our batteries, et cetera, et cetera? Yes, we need more housing. We've got a problem. But where are we going to shove all these houses into with state mandates or anything else? We're messed up. Um, now I go saying, um, again, I don't know how to get out of this. I'm rather frustrated and pissed off. I'm angry. As for this, what are we getting for $28,000 a month? That's $28,000 a month. Are we getting one person? Are we getting a whole group of people? And what's the real number? What are the add-ons going to be for $28,000 a month? Do we get this much? Do we get this much? What's included? I don't know. I have no idea. Um, there I go saying, um, again, I'm going to cure myself of that. I'm trying to anyway. I personally don't like the sound at all of having a steady hand, especially from someone that's outside of my community. Fairfax is Fairfax. We're not Mill Valley. We're never going to be Mill Valley, partly because we don't have acres and acres and acres of buildings and businesses. Fairfax is a small little burg. How the state or anyone else expects us to put a whole ton of housing in here with a whole bunch more traffic? I don't know. Maybe we need 5,000 places at the country club at McIntosh's place. Maybe we need to somehow legalize all the illegal units that are speckled up and through the hills. Hey, I didn't say, um, I was quiet. I like that. As for other things on the agenda, I think it's really stupid and premature to spend any of that 20,000, $28,000 a month on the rent control stabilization, whatever you want to call it, because that is not a cooked deal. We're having a special meeting on that coming up.
Thank you very much.
Sierra.
Uh, thank you, Council. I'm Michael Sexton. I'm the organizer of Fairfaxresidents.org. Um, I represent about 400 of the participants of that site. Um, what we're talking about here is, um, what we're focused on is primarily money. Uh, I want to commend the staff, first of all, the overworked staff and Heather. But the whole focus of this and the whole focus of your, uh, work should be on the housing element. Um, since the stated, uh, scope of work for Fourleaf, uh, the second major work emphasis will be to support the implementation of the town's rent stabilization just cause eviction program. There are several questions, uh, in regards to the contracting with Fourleaf, uh, that the residents and certainly people on my site would like to know. First, is there a specific budget allocation by Fourleaf or yourself for the implementation of the rent control ordinances? And how much does Fourleaf expect to spend on the implementation responsibilities, uh, in the next four months? Will it be a record of these expenses, uh, that's publicly available on an ongoing basis? In other words, are they spending 50% of their time, 60% time, or just 10% of, of their time that we're contracting with them on the rent stabilization implementation? If the council is expecting to hold a workshop on how to improve these ordinances and how to improve the implementation of the whole process, can the implementation be delayed until the modified ordinances are agreed to by the council? Will Fourleaf be responsible for creating the council's housing workshop? And why and will, um, why will Fourleaf be implementing these ordinances, um, before the workshop? Since these ordinances have created such a division in the community and are fraught with unneeded costly complexity, well, one of the options for Fourleaf to consider in planning for this is to actually not implement the ordinances. Will Fourleaf produce an estimation of what these rent control ordinances will cost the taxpayers? Will cost in the terms of value of the dipping of the value of the properties of Fairfax homeowners? And will they, um, produce an estimation on the increase of initial rents for new renters? If these programs, if these ordinances are implemented? Since many housing providers and ADU owners have decided to take their units off the rental market, will Fourleaf consider this decrease in the number of housing units in their final housing report? Or will the consultants? Um, will they count against the final housing quotas? Will Fourleaf estimate the, uh, expected increase in the initial rents due to having less units available? And will that be, uh, indicated on, on the, uh, report? Will Fourleaf, Fourleaf produce a survey of housing providers? Um, in regards to generating data about, do they want rent control to actually be implemented? And will they take the units off the market? This data I would like to see on, on the final report. And just one last sentence, I would urge you to answer these questions and repeal or delay the rent control ordinances. This would allow you to focus on the housing element solely, which should be the priority and save the taxpayers a substantial amount of money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. My name is Philip Salivary. Fairfax residents, um, I'm here tonight infused about what this money is going to be spent for. You're asking for $140,000 of taxpayer money and you don't tell us what it's for. I mean, you told, you tell us what it's for, but you haven't told us what the breakdown is. So we don't know how much you are spending on the housing element, how much you are spending on just cause. And those are very important questions to answer. Somebody up there, I, I spoke to somebody, a, a staff member this week and I asked, what's the breakdown? And they didn't know. And I asked, who knows what the breakdown is? And they didn't know who, who, who would know that? Somebody here in this room, hopefully the five of you know the answer to that question. And if you don't, I think we're in a lot more trouble than anybody thinks. Um, it seems really irresponsible to put out a agenda item that doesn't tell us this. There's a lot of people out in the community that are unaware of what's happening tonight in this. There's a lot of people out in the community that are unaware of what's happening tonight in this room. And there's certainly nobody I know of knows what the breakdown is. And I don't understand how you guys can vote to approve or not approve if you don't know how the money is being spent. So I would encourage you to not take this vote tonight. And if you can't do that, for whatever reason you think you can't do it, then I would encourage you to carve out the amount that's being set aside out of this hundred and forty thousand dollars. I'd ask you to carve out the amount that goes to the just cause and rent control ordinances until we figure out what's actually going to happen there. You all have floated the idea of a workshop presumably to discuss and come to some kind of conclusion about, you know, what these ordinances will look like. Councilmember Ackerman had said, and I believe on December fourth, that these things could and would be changed in the future. So if that's the case, why are we paying a consultant any amount of money to, to look into this for us? Lastly, I would say that it's four and a half months, not five months. You're asking for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for four and a half months. Why not a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for six months? Why not two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twelve months? But the point of that comment is this is the first ask. This is the first time before you're being asked to approve this money. And there will be other monies that you're going to be asked to approve because it's not going to get done. So I'd like to know the real number rather than this imaginary number of a hundred and forty thousand for four and a half months. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Norma Neal. I'm a resident of forty-four years. I spent thirty years in engineering, design and construction. I'd like to request that you remove from the scope of work of Four Leaf anything related to the rental ordinance or eviction ordinance. We want to work together with you. We have a lot of issues. We have a lot of problems. You're moving along like that doesn't exist, like we're not going to work together and try and do something. If we can't work together, there are other measures available. Maybe we do a recall. I think it's important that you look at that number of a hundred and forty thousand dollars and what the actual scope of work will be and what types of people will actually be doing the work. If you divide it all by Dan's salary, we're only getting fifteen weeks of work. It's fiscally irresponsible as written. We've been told, you've been told over and over that we have problems with the whole ordinances that have been passed. We need to work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Fancy seeing you all here again. My name is Candace and I'm a resident here in Fairfax. I grew up here. And the more I'm learning and studying about, let's just say the deadline just missed or the ordinances in either direction, I'm realizing and the understaffing of our town. How much you guys have on your plate? And it's a lot. Particularly with our town manager, Works Director. There's a lot of things that have been falling to the wayside in this town for quite some time. And whether that's an understaffing issue or COVID or a lot of different things going on, I can understand that. I wasn't here for about eight years. So I left and came back to not two different Fairfax's, but definitely a Fairfax not in the condition that it was in when I left. I can't beg to claim that I know nearly as much as any of you about anything that you're doing right now, whether that's Brown Act violations or the complexities of the groups that come to you with needs or, or particularly in the planning department. I mean, I know Lockaby, I know a few others, but the amount of work Michelle alone has to handle and pass through and deal with in this town. So we've got overworked town employees. A lack of production of results. And a lot of money being spent and has been spent in the last three years. A lot of money. And at the same time, we're told that we don't have the money to fix our roads. We just got our road report at the last meeting. Some real basics that need to be prioritized here as far as getting our town to a better situation. Wherever you stand on the rent control or excuse me, rent stabilization and just cause ordinances, one way or the other, you're entitled to those feelings. All of us are. But again, bottom line, a lot of things aren't getting done. After speaking to one of you, you know, recognizing that we're all focused and angry about one issue, there's a lot of other things going on in this town, such as not meeting this eight-year deadline. That's pretty big. And it just opened us up to the state coming in, telling us how to run our town, where to build, what to do and how we're going to do it. Lawsuits from YIMBY and other affordable housing coalitions throughout the state. We've really left ourselves wide open to a lot of legal issues. And that'll be again Janet having to work more and accrue more hours and more money spent to our town attorney. So I would just implore all of you to recognize why you ask all of us on one side of the town to have a workshop and come together and to build as a community, these ordinances. But then intend to pass legislation here or to certify to approve these costs prematurely before we all come together. It's kind of another stick in the eye. And it really does not make the people that you're asking to come together in a workshop feel that you're even listening or even willing to work together. So I would just ask all of you to please remove the monies from this aspect of the hundred and forty thousand to Four Leaf until after we have our workshop that has been promised or spoken of or created. I think that that would put some goodwill into the hearts of the people of Fairfax in thinking about how we move forward here. Thank you.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. Wow, good thing we don't have any money coming in from a marijuana dispensary that we kind of used to offset. But most of you voted against that. Good thing we wasted sixty-five thousand dollars on an unqualified facilitator. God, who else have we hired who's been worth us? Oh yeah, why aren't we paying sixty thousand dollars to someone to rewrite the dictionary? So that it's walk, woke, correct? And to, and to copy and paste reports that a twelve or a ten-year-old could do, probably for ten bucks? You're talking about the parklets, the staff worked on all these specifications, which were supposed to have already started like how many months ago and no parklet has been affected? How many structural engineers live in Fairfax who could deal with that aspect of it? I have one like four houses away from me. I don't know if you charge two hundred dollars an hour. He probably charged less. How much more money are you going to waste? You know, if these people were competent, you know, maybe we wouldn't be here. If we had a competent attorney, we probably wouldn't be having Brown Act violations. You guys probably wouldn't be violating California Supreme Court rulings. But it doesn't bother her, doesn't bother you, doesn't bother the town manager. Wow, isn't that kind of like a definition of a rogue town? So what we're looking at here is a failure. As so many people have brought up. Why aren't you contracting or contacting UC Berkeley for their city planning to get some help in here? You can look at just the city planning companies throughout the United States. There have been major layoffs there. Maybe someone is available. Maybe you need a different recruiting firm because obviously whoever you've been talking to isn't working. But you know, you're looking at what, eight thousand dollars? No more. It was that eight thousand dollars a week? For a consultant? This is what you feel you can do with town money? And look at all the other consultants you've hired or people you've hired who are incompetent. How are we supposed to have any confidence in what you're doing? You hired a firm to do the Meadowway Bridge. It took them what, ten years to do the Bon Air Bridge? It took them less time than that to build a sixteen-kilometer bridge island and tunnel from Sweden to Denmark. You know? This is the question. People don't know what you're doing. You know, you talk about the, the rent stabilization just caused. So six hundred people signed the petition to put this in. No, six hundred people signed a petition for the concept. You had over six hundred people sign a petition against it in a week because what you put forth is a failure. Divisive. Never included the landlords in the conversation. You think most of the landlords here are greedy capitalists? I don't. And you can ask them, your own figures are talking about maybe one percent of the available units where there might be a problem in a year. So why are you penalizing the other ninety-nine percent or ninety-eight percent? I don't get it. I really don't get it. And I really don't know what most of you were doing. I mean, you campaigned like you love this town and then basically you tried to shaft the people who live here. I don't get it.
So I want to remind folks that we should not disparage staff, members of the public, even the council, although that's what we're here for. And I particularly take objection to disparaging our town attorney. And so I realize there's a lot of anger out there, but Mark, I'm not going to argue with you. You went over your time significantly and you disparaged people.
Mr. Egger.
Excuse me, Mayor and Councilmember Frank Egger again on Meadowway. Now, I did not realize the town council authorized a hiring of Four Leaf planning consultants. Fairfax continues to hire consultants who had no, have no clue who we are, how we got here and where we're going. Fairfax spent over half a million dollars on the first planning consultant EMC prepare the new housing and safety elements that the state is demanding. Then Fairfax fired them and forced their planning director to retire. Then hired consultant David Walter, who's here tonight to provide, has been providing interim planning services, but he's a PERS retiree and he's, his time has run out. Diet and Batya was hired for six hundred and twenty-one thousand to finish up the work EMC was carrying out. Next, we hear a developer who was refused to fund an environmental impact report for almost two years on the proposed wall property development. That's Mr. Rothman. He claims he's filing a builder's remedy lawsuit against Fairfax. That problem was of his, of his own doing and, and also the, a developer funded pro housing group claims they are filing a lawsuits against, against Fairfax because Fairfax does not yet have its state-approved housing element. So I guess the question is, when, when, when do Fairfax residents get to weigh in on these issues? I mean, there's a lot of experience in this community that can help you. Just cause for eviction and rent stabilization has taken all of the air out of the room. Meeting after meeting after meeting. We have so many important issues to deal with. There's no institutional knowledge with a town lawyer or the consultants that have been hired. So over the years, Fairfax's experience with hiring managers or management employees has been, we either get a great young person on their way up or we find an older wise person on their way out. And, and, and that's, that's how we function over the years. And so we've made the best of some of the young people have come and moved up and left. And, and we've done okay with some of the older, older folks that have on their way out that have, have served our town well. So that, that's the role of a small town. We just don't have the kind of money needed to attract, you know, big, big name people. So I guess my, my final question is, who's defending us? Please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom, Michelle?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I see four, five raised hands. The first is Liz Frohneberger, followed by Lisa, followed by Kay. And Liz, you're unmuted now.
Hi, thank you very much. You can hear me?
Yes.
Hi, well, there's a lot to unpack here. But I'd like to echo the comments of Norma Neal, Candace, Philip, and I think one other person, don't remember who, who said you really ought to make sure that you carve out completely out of those, that hundred and forty thousand dollars, any work to be done by the person you're thinking of hiring as your interim planning director. I, I think, you know, if you could make that commitment, that would go a long way toward showing those of us who are upset with the rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinances, that you really do mean to do something in terms of mitigating some of the damage that those ordinances are going to be doing. That's number one. Number two, I hope you really are listening to Mike Sexton because Mike Sexton really is speaking for hundreds of people. It's not just him. It's not just a small group of people. We are very active right now. So that's, that's that. I want to go back to an earlier point I made about if you don't have any money for a moderator, and I believe that was said at the conclusion of the last meeting. Does somebody want to correct me? No? No, no, okay.
It's being investigated.
Okay, so I would strongly recommend that you get a professional moderator because if you try to do any of that, you know, moderating yourself between the landlords and the tenants and all the interested parties, it's going to be a cluster. You know it is. So get some professionals in there. That's no comment against you all. It just, you need to have a professional handling that. I do have a question about the implementation. I am very confused about implementing and yet the, the ordinances are in effect, but they're not implemented. So are landlords required to, to do everything right now as those ordinances are written? I mean, that's, that's genuinely confusing to me. Maybe you could answer that at the end of my time. Also, I just want to point out that, you know, the rent, these two ordinances didn't need to, didn't need to happen. It's not like we didn't already have an earlier ordinance in place from the town, also ordinances in place with the county and the state to help tenants. So I'm just pointing that out. The wall property, that's a late addition on my part as I live underneath the wall property. There was a quote in a newspaper by David Walter about how Rothman had come to him prepared to do a builder's remedy. Linda Neal then said that there was no, there was nothing on the agenda for that. So that's confusing to me. I don't know what happened. And just lastly, what on earth, what happened with the housing element? You guys, you had eight years. I don't understand why this is such a big thing right now. Anyway, that's, that's my time and I, but I would like an answer about the implementation because it doesn't affect me, but I know I've had this question a lot from other mom and pops. Thanks.
Quick clarification because we were hearing this eight years to work on housing element stuff. Could, could you please clarify that, David?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to do that. Actually, the consultant firm that was originally hired to work with the town was contracted with in April of 2021. So it's, it's an eight-year period that we're planning for. We have not been working for eight years on preparing the draft. That, that's a misunderstanding. So we're planning for an upcoming eight-year period, 2023 through 2031. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janet, I don't, I don't know if you're with us and I don't know if you want to respond to the, the question about implementation, but that might help folks watching online or in the room.
Sure. So the ordinances are in effect. They were in effect thirty days after passage, after the second reading. There is a clause in the rent stabilization ordinance that talks about implementation. And what is required for the rent stabilization portion to be implemented is contracts have to be in place for all of the different services that are needed. And we have to bring back a resolution to the council. The council has to adopt a resolution. The council has to adopt a resolution with, uh, an implementation date. And at that point in time, the rent stabilization ordinance will be implemented as of the date in that resolution. And that has not happened yet. Uh, those contracts and, and uh, technology and everything needs to be set up to actually implement that ordinance. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. Other folks on Zoom, Michelle?
Yes. Next is Lisa, followed by Kay, followed by Mallory. Lisa, you're unmuted now.
Hi, that's Lisa Cerabella, Olima Road in Fairfax. I want to agree with the people who said that in light of the upcoming workshops, um, to hopefully amend the current rent control and just cause ordinances that we go ahead and exclude uh, rent control and just cause from the cost and also the scope of work of this four-leaf consulting firm. And hopefully that would lower the twenty-eight thousand per month cost. Um, I also want to agree with the person who said in light of our expenses going up astronomically, maybe we have to consider doing what Colorado did, which is generate tax money from recreational THC dispensaries. It's not a bad idea, given the, the road that we're going down and the money we might need to raise, but um, we can only do what we can afford to do in Fairfax. So someone mentioned earlier, what someone's sitting at the panel, the, um, the planning person said that we have state mandated projects and we have aspirational projects. And I loved that phrase because the state mandated, mandated projects are mandatory uh, by, by law and the aspirational projects, whether it be one of these committees or whether it be rent control are not, um, required and, and maybe we can't afford to do them or implement them uh, or enforce them, execute them, et cetera. Um, I want to suggest that we have transparency of Fairfax's budget and expenses every single month at these meetings. And that means breaking out line by line by line. What does it cost to implement the housing element that we have to build X hundred number of units? How much money is of our budget is going towards that? How much money are you aspirationally hoping to put towards uh, any type of amended rent control and just cause eviction program? Um, and how much are these lawsuits that are coming up against Fairfax? Because that needs to be in the budget. We need to have cash reserves in our Fairfax budget for these, you know, who knows, hundreds of thousands of dollars of lawsuits need to go into the budget in case we have to pay that out at some point. So we need transparency every month of line by line. I just mentioned a few expenses, but I, I'm sure there are many more expenses. You know, our fire department, et cetera, every single line item. Um, what's our budget for it? What's it going to cost us? Because that'll help the town understand if we have any money left over for aspirational projects, whether it be, you know, implementing and enforcing rent control and just cause evictions, or whether it be some other project that we want to do. So I think that is critical. I also find it very interesting that we can't afford a high-level director planner position because we had two that stepped away because I guess they were asking for too much money. We couldn't afford them. Um, so those negotiations fell flat, but somehow we're going to afford to pay twenty-eight thousand per month for X number of months. I mean, and we don't know if that's going to be four months or ten months till we find a director who, whose salary we can afford. So my suggestion is maybe we hire a less experienced planning director at a lower salary. Um, and they can learn the ropes instead of, you know, paying a consulting firm twenty-eight thousand a month for six or twelve or twenty-four months till we actually hire a high-level director at a very high salary.
At least I just wanted to let you know that the time was up in here, but I just wanted to let you know, if you can conclude your comments, please.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to conclude my comments because my very last comment is that and I want to go back to this because I mentioned it at the last meeting we had. Governor Newsom's AB fourteen eighty-two has been in place for the entire state of California since January twenty twenty. And I really think it is critical that we collect data on how that has impacted Fairfax. Have there been less evictions because of AB fourteen eighty-two from January twenty twenty till now? Did we mail tenants any know your rights brochures? Did we explain to tenants where they should turn if their landlord doesn't follow AB fourteen eighty-two? And how is that data getting compiled? So we can determine if AB fourteen eighty-two is adequate rent control for Fairfax or whether we need to adopt something harsher, like what you guys are trying to do by adopting Berkeley's rent control and just cause. And were landlords contacted and penalized when they didn't follow AB fourteen eighty-two in Fairfax since January twenty twenty? Because I cannot understand for the life of me why we would be considering Berkeley's rigorous rent control and just cause eviction laws when we haven't even evaluated Governor Newsom's AB, AB fourteen eighty-two's impact on the town of Fairfax. And lastly, why does the Fairfax two ordinances not make an exception for owner occupied residences? In AB fourteen eighty-two for the state of California, Governor Newsom excluded two-family owner occupied residences. And I know that that is very important to homeowners and landlords in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to let folks know that, um, the town does post an itemized uh, intake and, and outtake in terms of revenues and expenditures every month, uh, for our regular meetings, uh, financial statements and financial reports. So please go to, um, look in the consent calendar under those financial statements, uh, if you're interested in seeing all the financial information for the town. It's posted every month. Thanks. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Kay, followed by Mallory. Kay, you're unmuted now.
Hi, how are you guys? Um, so my, I just have questions. The four-leaf planner, um, what do they actually still need to do as far as the rent stabilization part? Um, and then will this take out of the budget, um, to Berkeley? You know, because I didn't see anything about this in, uh, the, uh, fiscal impact. So will this lessen the thirty K for data that we're going to pay to Berkeley and the other forty-six K we're going to pay to them to, you know, for appeals and stuff? And then I guess my other thing is, isn't this something that should have been factored in, you know, when you guys are developing it, saying like, hey, we don't have any way to, we don't have the manpower to do this? And, uh, another question is, is there a cap? Um, or can they just keep coming back for more money? Is there like, when, when does someone say enough is enough? And then last question is, um, uh, the public housing draft review, I saw that was supposed to be out in the beginning of February. Has it, has it been out and I just can't find it? That's it. So that was a lot of questions, but if you could kind of answer them, I would so appreciate it.
I think the one, we, we, this isn't an interactive, but the housing element draft is not out for public review yet and uh, that will probably be sometime in March. Thank you.
And Heather, can you just share what the contract is in terms of not to exceed or how that's structured? I think there was a question about, is it, is this just the first and do they, can they keep coming and raising it or?
Well, it, it was an estimate based on how much time we thought we would need, so it could be less. Um, and of course we'll be checking in with you if it, if it looks like, you know, we're going to need more time from this person, then um, we would want to come back. That would exceed my authority.
Right. So they, essentially what would be approved, um, that would be the ceiling and in order for anything to go above that, you would have to come back and ask for authority at a public meeting.
That's correct. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mallory, followed by Michelle DeGregorio, followed by Karen Stern. Mallory, you're unmuted now.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Um, I, I just want you guys to be really aware that everybody here is pretty much on the same side, saying the same thing over and over to the council. And I, and I just want you guys to listen and not use the, well, the people who aren't here have different opinions as an answer. I don't want to hear that anymore. If they're not here, they're not that interested. And so the people who are interested, who have spoken, who have said, spoken really succinctly, um, in my, in my opinion, they've said exactly what I would say and I want to say. In terms of, um, you know, Frank, Mike, it, there were, there were, everybody here who spoke, has spoken for me. And I think for more than, you know, more people in the town than just for me. But in terms of consultants, I, I wanted to know how you're going about getting them. Are you going, how do people in the town who are consultants or who are contractors, how do they know that you're reaching out? Because I don't think that you guys are reaching out to Fairfax. I think you're reaching out to people who, um, you're getting referrals from that maybe have nothing to do with Fairfax, such as when we had San Diego people or Berkeley people uh, for this, for this, uh, what we're dealing with now. Um, I do agree that we need a moderator, but I don't want this workshop to be you guys placating us with a workshop. I want, I want it to be a real thing and for people to be listening to what we are really saying and people of town are, are wanting. And not just, not just sit there and, and say, okay, thank you for sharing. I think also that the, the people who we hire, the consultants and, um, and the moderators should be from here. And they should know what this town is about because this is a very unique town. I've been here for, I don't know, fifty years and watching it grow and watching it get, in my version, somewhat worse and somewhat better. But, um, I think the important thing is to hire the right people for this town, not, not the famous wonderful people who are making lots of money to do this job, who have done it for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Michelle DeGregorio, followed by Karen Stern, followed by Raymond Bergerella. And Michelle, you are unmuted now.
Unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I am late to the party admittedly. Um, and a lot of, of what I have, uh, my information I've gotten through reading articles, um, lately, the Pacific Sun article and, um, uh, council member Hellman, um, I know the article, it stated that, you know, uh, with the average rent of Fairfax being around twenty-three hundred, you know, renters are facing steep increases. And I also know that, um, homeowners and landlords are as well. Um,
Michelle, really quickly, I just wanted to let you know that this isn't a, an item that's about the rent control ordinances themselves. This is an item about a backfilling our, our planning services and it's the town of Fairfax. So if you could please keep your comments to, to that item.
Okay, so planning, um, I guess as far as planning for the meeting to, um, discuss the, um, you know, extending compassion with these ordinances to towns marginalized residents and to, um, landlords, um, I, I, I think, um, that needs to be in the planning, the residents, as well as the homeowners when we have a meeting. And, um, maybe discussing, um, an exclusion for senior homeowners and low-income homeowners, homeowners and landlords. Um, and, and really with planning, I would like to see what's the solution here so it serves and helps both, um, tenants and homeowners who rent. Um, the last person who spoke, talked about, um, Newsom AB, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember what it was, but not grouping in with, with landlords, um, uh, I'm sorry, homeowners. All right. Well, there's a lot I want to say, but obviously you don't want me to say it. So, um, I just feel like there are solutions and I would like to see that in the planning. Um, something for everyone. Um, I don't feel like everyone was represented and, and, um, there needs to be, I agree with everyone else, a mediator. Um, so there is someone who sees the whole picture and is non-positional, sees both, um, you know, the sides of the tenants and the homeowners. Um, yeah, so that's about it.
Thank you. And please, um, do come to the community workshop and, um, that may be the appropriate place for some of the comments. Uh, but thank you for joining us this evening.
The next speaker is Karen Stern, followed by Ray Bergerella. Karen, you're unmuted now.
Thank you. Um, what, um, what I've noticed, the words housing element, rent stabilization, just cause, ordinances, planning director vacancy or whole, all seems to get thrown into a pot and mixed up. And before you know it, one is talking about housing element. And then one is talking about planning director and twenty-eight thousand and then four-leaf. And I think we're quite mixed up right now. And it sounds like we're in a bind. And because something is state mandated, let me back up. As someone said before, look at our priorities right now. What is really pushing the envelope? And it sounds like the missed date on the housing element is an issue. It sounds like filling the vacancy for the planning director is an issue. Stop creating another issue with the ordinances. Pull back on that for just a moment. Delay implementation. It doesn't have to jump into the fire with the other things that are burning us. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ray Bergerella, followed by Chris P. Ray, you're unmuted now. You may have to unmute yourself.
Ray Bergerella, Fairfax resident for almost fifty years, merchant in town, worked with many a town committees. I really believe, yes, we got to take care of this housing element. That's number one. Number one, we've been dealing with it for a while and now we haven't met a requirement to do it. I think we need to. You heard all these people before. I agree with all of them. We need to take this, just rescind these ordinance for now and we can talk about them later. Let's concentrate on what the town has to get done. And right now it's the housing ordinance and you can get a lot of help from really smart people in this town if we get rid of that and concentrate on what we have to concentrate on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is, um, that just changed. Is Naomi Alessandra, followed by Georgia Gibbs. Naomi, you're unmuted now.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm Naomi. I'm a Fairfax resident. As always, I really appreciate your time and effort on behalf of our town. It seems clear that we are in great need of someone to fulfill long-term planning for Fairfax. Many people have spoken this evening about the need for the town to move forward with the most critical elements of planning for the future. It sounds like it is an exceedingly difficult market for hiring of a long-term planning director and that a bridge is greatly needed at this time to fulfill important goals. Most critically, the housing element. Staff has made it clear that the housing element will be the lion's share of the work, the new contractor here. But it will also be important to keep other important planning moving forward for our town, including our short-term rental program, our parklet program, and yes, our rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinances. I'm looking forward to the upcoming community meeting on this subject to hear from many voices and to fine tune the ordinances as needed. But holding such a meeting does not mean that the ordinances have been rescinded. On that subject, I do want to encourage you to make certain that such a community meeting would be structured in a way that would ensure that renters feel safe sharing their, their opinions about these ordinances. In line with our staff's recommendation, I encourage you to go forward with hiring the contractor via four leaf to fulfill this critical planning work for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is, oh, I've been asked how many more hands? One, two, three, four. Oh. Sorry. People don't always lower their hands. I think they're four. Has Liz Frohnerberger spoken on this topic?
Yes.
Okay. Her hand is still up. I'm lowering that. So next is Georgia Gibbs, Chris P. And that looks like it. So Georgia, you're unmuted now.
Lower my hands. I don't forget. So I just wanted to say that I agree with a lot of the, um, people who've spoken tonight about waiting on the just cause ordinance and implementing the rent can rent. I know you're not calling it rent control, but, um, the revised rental rules. And in light of the needs of the state and the fact that we've been sued and that's going to incur additional costs, which we're not even, um, on the, in our sightlines on the last meeting, I think that it would be important to put a hold on things that aren't, um, necessary to do in the immediate sense. And I also still not understanding why there's such a closed stance against listening to so many voices. It reminds me a little bit of the, um, amendment that was put forth in Michigan this past year that they almost didn't get in for a vote because the spacing was incorrect. And I, I kind of feel that we're getting the same kind of railroad in here. And that's all I'll say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia.
The next speaker is Chris P. And you're unmuted now.
Hey, town council. Uh, first of all, I would like to apologize for, uh, last meeting. I tried to call on my phone. It wasn't, uh, picking up. So sorry for wasting your time, especially when it was that late at night. Uh, so I just want to say I agree that the town is short-staffed and as a unionized, uh, worker, um, it, it's hard, you know, to take, uh, I, I sympathize uh, with understaffing and being overworked. So I would agree with that. But, um, this meeting is about the, you know, housing element. And I feel like it's kind of been led astray from that. And it kind of feels like everyone's trying to preempt kind of the discussion of a community workshop on rent stabilization. So, um, thank you, town council for, you know, everything that you've done on the rent stabilization and just cause ordinances.
Thank you.
It looks like, oh, we have another raised hand. Claire Armitage, you're unmuted now.
Hi, um, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Um, I've been listening for the last several hours and, um, just feel a lot of sadness and a sense of overwhelm, um, for what our town is facing. Both within the walls of city hall, so to speak, and those of us who live in the community at large. And I think all of us have experienced, um, a sense of overwhelm when we're in jobs and we feel like we're drowning and no matter what we do, it isn't enough. And I, I really, uh, have a great deal of compassion for all of you in that regard. And, you know, what comes to my mind is just the whole idea of setting boundaries around um, what we can and can't handle both personally and professionally and as a town. And, you know, somebody else spoke earlier about the, uh, aspirational, um, projects and the really mandatory projects. And, um, I know that sometimes it's difficult for us to tease apart which or which, if we really fervently believe in something. And I, I know this town, this town council really believes in the tenant protections that they're, that they're, that they've proposed. And I also would like to say what other people have said this evening as well. And that is that, uh, were you to remove, um, allocated funds for the implementation of these two ordinances from the consultant's budget, I think you would be sending a strong message to those of us in the community who are landlords and that you are actually going to be bargaining in a sense in good faith. So, um, again, I want to extend my condolences to you for having so much on your plate. It affects the town. It affects the energy in the town. And, um, the, the, uh, well, let me just leave it with that, that I, I hope that we as a community can come together and figure out a way to improve and, and enrich our town, um, and not at the expense of the people who devote their careers, um, to working to make that happen. So, thank you and good night.
Thank you, Claire.
I see no more raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment and take it back to the dais.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, I, with regard to the workshop that's coming out, uh, which has yet to be scheduled, but I think we're honing in on a date in March, uh, for the just cause ordinance. I think we all, we really want it to be a productive session. We really want it to be, to bring the community together. And I'm wondering if, um, as an act of good faith, that we are listening, we do want to come together, can we de-scope that the consultant from working on implementation in this interim period between now and, and the workshop until we know more about? I, I don't know that the public totally understands what the scope of work regarding implementation is because that we haven't approved anything. We don't know what implementation looks like. We have a couple of ideas related to the registration and some of the solutions related to that and communications and so on and so forth. But that, there's quite a bit of work there, but I, I think I heard loud and clear and I understand why that makes sense and why it's making people feel uncomfortable that we're not committed, you know, to.
Through the mirror, if I could respond. In the scope of work that we presented in the packet, we tried to show the range of projects that the contract planner may work on. But as I indicated earlier, the primary focus is the housing element update project.
Sure. I mean, I think we, we all know that's the priority.
And if I could continue, please.
Yeah.
So at this point, the idea really would be that the contract planner would only review those ordinances just as background information and pause just to have familiarity with those ordinances. And until we receive clear direction from the town council, further implementation and time expended by that consultant would not occur. That, that's our intent.
Okay. Could we capture that for the record, please, Michelle, that the consultant will review the ordinances to gain familiarity, but will not work on implementation beyond that? Thank you. If, if we're in agreement on that.
Yeah.
I think that's a great suggestion, Councilmember Hellman. If you're done, uh, I just want to raise a few points. Um, I think, uh, you know, uh, David talked about, and I think Naomi Alessandra was very eloquent in pointing out that most of the work is the housing element and there's a lot, a whole lot. And as you just pointed out, and just kind of to restate it, there's a panoply of a number of things that could be worked on, but with Councilmember Hellman's suggestion, and that's where I was thinking too, is, you know, he's not going to be working on everything. And, and for now, that's really a good faith way to go. So I like that idea. Um, you know, I still have reservations about the cost. I understand where we're at and we're in a very difficult situation. I also want to respond to something that somebody said is that, um, the town manager talked about, you know, we have tried to hire people and we've, we've, those have been failed recruitments. There are at least five openings in, in Marin County alone for planning directors and all around the Bay Area. And so we're competing with that. And we know that we will be starting with somebody who probably isn't in planning director level, but would grow into the job. Uh, because we in Fairfax do not pay the highest salaries and we can't afford to. So, um, there are other communities that are paying really high salaries, really high. And so I'm, you know, I have reservations about the cost. I understand we're in a very difficult position. I think we should go ahead with this, but I do want to say, um, to the town manager that we need to start a new recruitment. And maybe now that some, um, quite a few cities have their housing elements at least into HCD for review. Uh, there may be more potential starting to open and we may, we may be able with a new recruitment to have more opportunities than we had in the past. So, and I also want to say something is there is a little focus on some folks that we need to hire people in town. We've looked and there, there's a real paucity of people available to do this kind of work. And it's, it's, you know, everybody's feeling it. So, um, we would love that. But I also think there is no problem with somebody like David coming in who doesn't live here, but has really in, in his short time here, has really tried to understand the community and walked around Fairfax. He's told me many times about how much he loves this town and he's shopping in it. And I wish we could keep him. But, um, but I think, you know, people come to Fairfax and just it's a different community. And I'm sure every community feels that they're different, but I think we are different. So I want to thank you for bringing this forward and I still have reservations about the cost, but I do feel we need to go forward with Councilmember Hellman's suggestion.
Great. Any other comments?
Yeah. I also just wanted to thank Councilmember Coleman for pulling this off of, or Cole or Coleman, God, I'm getting tired. Um, and it's not even that late yet, uh, for pulling this off of the consent calendar. Um, because I think she wisely noted that it needed to be discussed more. So I just wanted to point that out, that we could have just passed this last meeting, um, and, and she decided that it would be worth discussing with the public. So that's one important thing around transparency. Um, I think the other thing is I agree with what, uh, Councilmember, um, Hellman said, um, about, you know, how we can move forward with this. I do think as many speakers said, we do need to prioritize the housing element. Um, and so I think we need to get this contract going, um, as quickly as possible. And if we can make that change, that will make some members of the public feel more comfortable with it, I would be all for it. I did also want to point out that just as a resident, I noted that our town, I, if I remember correctly, was the first town in Marin to hire a consultant for the housing element. Um, so we got a way jumpstart on anybody else. We've had some unfortunate occurrences, but Fairfax knew it was going to be hard and they looked for somebody and there were almost no, uh, consultants available because Southern California was finishing its cycle. And then everyone was, you know, snapping up consultants as soon as they came available. So I just wanted to point that out. Uh, it's not like the town just didn't get its act together. Um, there was good effort put in. Um, and I did want to also, um, just ask, you know, I think a lot of people are talking about funding, but my understanding, and again, this is from my prior role as a resident of Fairfax, is that we tend to be in very good budgetary shape compared to other towns and cities in Marin. And that, that is partially due to certain members of the council keeping a really, uh, tight grip on the budget and also our staff doing a very good job. And I might be wrong there, but I think we have a, a healthy reserve. Am I wrong?
Yes, that's correct.
So, uh, it's not, you know, people may agree or disagree with the things that our, uh, money is being spent on, but it's not like the town has been run into the ground financially from my perspective. So, there you go.
Thank you, Councilmember Blash. Councilman Brackerman?
Well, thank you all for those comments. And, uh, I totally agree with, and thank Councilmember Hellman for bringing up the specific question. I was going to ask the same thing that I, I think it's totally reasonable for us to not put any unnecessary further work on implementation of these ordinances and the, the rent control and just cause ordinances until we have a chance to have the workshop and figure out where we're going with them. And I, I do feel like we just don't have any choice. We need to, I support the, the recommendation that we hire this, uh, hire the four leaf for this, I guess, interim work. Um, it sounds like they are, and, and I, David, I really want to thank you for your time here. This, I guess, might be your last council meeting, sitting here at this, uh, late hour. But thank you so much for being here. You, you have been the right person at the right time and I wish we could keep you. But I just, one of the things that you have brought to us is your contacts, your connections and the people that you've, you've been able to bring in. And I think Diet and Batia was a good choice. And that was clearly your, your knowledge of the people who work in this field that brought them to us. And so on that basis, I'm trusting that this is going to be another good choice for the difficult situation that we're in. But when you're in a difficult situation, you still have to deal with it. You can't just stop. So this is, I think this is what we should do at this point. So, yeah, I support the, uh, the proposal.
Thank you. And yeah, I just want to second the thanks and gratitude for everything you've done for our community. This will be your last meeting here as a staff member, but surely you'll be back as a citizen to receive like 10 proclamations for all the good work you've done for the community. So thank you so much, David. Yeah, I think everyone has said all that needs to be said at this hour. Um, is someone willing to make a motion?
I will, um, move that we adopt a
move that we adopt a resolution amending, restating and ratifying a consultant services agreement with Four Leaf Incorporated for contract planning services.
Um, friendly amendment, authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion, Ackerman, second. Hellman, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blash?
Yes.
And Mayor Cutrano?
Yes.
All eyes.
All eyes. Motion passes. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Thank you, David, again, and Heather, and thanks to the public for coming this evening. Uh, this meeting is adjourned.